It is 5:45 and it is June 9, 2020. I'm going to call the board meeting for the School Board of Manatee County to order, and I will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Moving forward, the Chair has bound good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the June 9, 2020 Agenda, updated June 8, 2020, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I've had...oh, sorry, I hit the button. I don't know why I did that.
It's all yours.
So we have a motion and a second. The motion was made by Vice Chair Kennedy and the second by Mr. Minor. Is there any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the agenda as amended on June 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We're going to move forward to reports from board members, and we have a board member, Mr. Minor, has an update in response to FSBA teleconference meetings. Mr. Minor, will you give us an update?
Okay, I'll try to be brief. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, weekly, I try to tune into FSAB telephone conference, that's Florida School Board Association, and we try to have a speaker of renown and intelligence to help us get a little more familiar with what's going around, both in Florida but the region and the country. It was our privilege this past Friday, you have Dr. Steve Pruitt, who is the chancellor for the Southeast Region Eastern, you know, section of National School Board Association, which is divided into 12 regions and different sections. We, through our money, our dues to the Florida School Board Association, have become members of the National School Board Association in the regions, which helps us try to keep up to date with what's going on in the regions and around the country. One of the remarks that, you know, struck me that he made in his going around was he's often asked about, or told, you know, "Public school business is not rocket science," and he responded, "Well, you're right. It's much more complicated." And I think everybody who's sitting around the dais here knows the complications, all many aspects that we have to consider in making our decisions, and what goes on from the nation, national and the state and local affects our effort to improve social justice, improve through the improving, providing better education for our communities. And so I really appreciated Steve Pruitt's comments. What, there's different, you know, views now about how quickly we go back to, you know, the standard education, but everybody that he's in contact was a little concerned about rushing it. What we are trying to do is consider all the different plans that our administration has put on and put together to maybe consider implementing in the next few weeks. And I shared a few thoughts, and I think everybody is recognizing that Manatee County is a leader in dealing with what we have in terms of not only providing education for our students, but also providing, you know, food to, for students and their families. We are recognized around the state for that. The big challenge is, you know, communicating with the different aspects of our community. I think that we deserve, our administration deserves applause for the reaching out with organizations to let them know that this school district is concerned about every student. We're concerned about everybody getting feed, fed, and that everyone get the best possible education, be it at home or in the school, as possible. So I think that we're looking for a lot of national input from the CDC as to whether we locally and statewide, how quickly we can advance, but it's kind of nice to, you know, when I'm listening in and my little bit of input, to know that we're doing very well, and we have people, you know, from around the state and nationwide echoing that we're doing very well. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward to the approval of the minutes. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes for May 12, 2020, regular meeting, and May 26, 2020, workshop.
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Vice Chair Kennedy and a second by Mr. Minor. Mr. Minor, please hit your second button.
Okay, there we go. Just a second. That was a bad joke.
Ha, 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 ha. Is there any discussion about the minutes? Man, it's so nice having y'all in the room, and I don't have to roll call that. All right, hearing none, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's move forward to our consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for June 9, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Kennedy and a second by Mr. Minor.
I'm looking for it on here. There we go. Okay.
Oh, second. Let's just reverse that.
Oh, you're...
We're fine.
Okay. This is a consent agenda, there is no conversation if you'd like to pull something to discuss.
No, it's, I can talk to the superintendent later. My question is not going to affect my vote, so I can, I can just ask the question after the meeting.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to move forward to new business non-consent items. Item number one is approval of budget amendments for April 2020. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for April 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Minor, can you hit your mover button for us?
That's all he did, sorry.
Thank you so much. All right, perfect. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We will move on to new business non-consent items, number two, approval of year-to-date financial statements through April 30, 2020. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the year-to-date financial statements through April 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vice Chair Kennedy, can you hit that second button for us? Thank you so much. And is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's move forward to item number three on new business, approval to purchase computer leases. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval to purchase computer lease HP Chromebooks, SDMC number 21-0041-KD, not to exceed $3,892,614,000.
I will second, and I have a question.
Okay, there, we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Kennedy, you have hit your speaker button.
Sure did. Superintendent Saunders, could you address the, kind of, the goal of, it's obviously a big, it's a big number item, it's a lot of laptops, so could you kind of address the game plan for the rollout and implementation of this, this batch?
Absolutely. One of the things that we're looking at, especially with the situation we experienced this past fourth quarter, is the possibility of each student needing to make sure they had an individual device. We had given out over 10,000 laptop devices, fourth quarter, and we've allowed many of those to stay with the students over the summer, and we had a couple of things that needed to happen. We needed to make sure that all of our schools were replenished with devices that could have already been removed and in homes, but also we needed to make sure we had enough readily devices that if we were having to close down schools for any reason in the fall, each child could take a computer, have internet access to continue their learning. We are hopeful that we're going to be able to bring our students back next year, but we do think that it could be somewhat of an intermittent year due to the virus popping up, maybe having to close down to clean buildings, et cetera. So by allowing us to lease, we were able to readily infuse these items, plus we purchased another 8,000 additional Chromebooks, so this is adding 20,000 devices to our existing inventory. So we do feel that we will be ready to start in the fall and for students to come back in the building and to have the proper technology needed.
Thank you.
Reverend Golden.
Madam Superintendent, is it fair to say then that this purchase that we are about to make, these computer leases and what have you, will allow us, no matter what alternative we adopt, in terms of reopening of schools in August, we would be able to accommodate the exigencies from each student, some being able to come to school, some not being able to come to school, some schools being closed? So is this your way of making sure that every child in this county has an opportunity to be plugged into the educational process?
Absolutely. We're going to make sure that, no matter what their financial situation is, a learning device is not going to be a barrier, even though this past year we partnered with many local churches in the community for Wi-Fi. We know that we're going to have to come up with different plans this next year because buses are going to be running every day with children on them, so we're going to have to make sure we're outfitting every child that if they are home for any reason, that they are able to continue receiving their education.
Just one more question. Where does this $3,892,614 comes, come from? Because we are being told now that we can expect budget cuts, we can expect retrenchment in every aspect of funding, not just school funding, but across the state. So how are we going to, to do this?
I appreciate you asking that. These are coming out of our capital dollars that are already existing, you know, with the half-cent sales tax. We have a number of proceeds in our capital fund, and these will be capital purchases.
All right, thank you very much.
Dr. Hopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, I think we may have touched on it in the briefing, but what is the, what is the term of the lease?
It's a four-year lease.
And does the, does this amount cover the four years, or does this amount cover this budget year?
It's covering these devices, but we will be adding to, it's part of our refresh that we do every year, and in the long run, it is going to end up saving us money because we have warranties, et cetera, on the devices that last for six years, even though they will be paid in full after four, so it really is a better financial plan, especially needing to get the devices all upfront. It would have ended up costing us more if it was an out-and-out purchase.
No, I understand that. So the question is, is, does the 3.892 million, 3.893 million, cover the full four-year lease term?
We, we will have a purchase each year for four years. Is that what, we will be doing part of the refresh. Am I not answering it right?
Well, I guess the question is, are we prepaying the lease, or is this a recurring expense for the next four years yet? Please.
I think you'd find the answer in item number D on your boardwork.
Four installment payments in the $900,000 range, so one each year for four years.
But it's that whole amount.
Yes.
Right, so, so, okay.
That's a total commitment, but it's paid over four years.
Okay, and that's, that's what I wanted to, that's the point I want to make, that this is, this is the total cost...
Right.
...over the life of the lease...
Correct.
...but it's paid out in four installments, where we're not prepaying the lease.
Correct.
So we're really approving budget authority on this for the next four years.
For the agreement lease.
And the only reason why I'm bringing it up is because I wanted to make a point that the, the cost of these devices for the fiscal, per fiscal year, is one-fourth of this amount.
Correct.
And that's, that's, that's the reason for, for, you know, I wanted to, because someone could look at this who doesn't have the full board packet and look at it and say, "Holy cow, you're spending, you know, $4 million a year for..." And so this, this is the total budget amount for the next four fiscal years.
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we just had someone who came to the podium and spoke and did not identify himself that we have never seen before.
For the record, please, welcome.
For the record, I think we want to hear who this is that has just stepped up so boldly and told us what we were doing.
Thank you, sir. I'm Tim Bardrawn, I'm the Associate Superintendent for Finance for the Manatee School District, Manatee Public Schools, as of May 26, I believe. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you're on it. We appreciate it. And you're right, someone may not dig that deep. It is in the boardwork, it does, it's on schedule, it's item number D, and it does say what the principal and everything else would be and what we're, what we are paying per year. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Is there any further questions? Great. Seeing no further questions, we've had a motion and a second, so we will vote. All those in favor of the approval to purchase the computer lease, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's move forward to item number four, which is approval of a new job description and position of background and fingerprint specialist. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of background and fingerprinting specialist.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. If, we'll hit the second button. Thank you. All right. It's just that nice to use the computer. I like it. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will move forward to item number five, approval of Resolution 2020-001, which is for categorical flexible spending. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the adoption of the Resolution 2020-001 for categorical flexible spending, providing flexibility to spend selected categorical funds, and allows an amendment to the school district's 2019-2020 operating budget in the amount of $2,436,805.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I, I just have some questions. Can you address how this, this money that's being shifted, how that's really going to be used?
I appreciate you asking that, and actually, this was one of the great discoveries that our, our new financial guru suggested. When Mr. Wagner was trying to come up with all of the needed supplies for the beginning of the school year to ensure that we have the proper safety measures and, and cleaning supplies, it was going to be in the tune of $4.7 million. And as you know, we're all competing nationwide to have these items purchased and in place prior to August. So one of the things that Tim was well aware of was the ability, if we had some unspent categorical funds, we could move those now and go ahead and use those for the purchase. The state's very clear on the, on the items or the ways that you can use those dollars. So we could use those for school safety or student safety. So it does help us to go ahead and be able to purchase the needed supplies since we have not yet received the federal dollars for the CARES Act. We have spent thus far $1.2 million in just three months or 10 weeks without students being present on campus, so we know the expenditures are going to be even higher. So it does give us the ability to go ahead and use some unspent money that, for items that we never even thought are budgeted for. So that, that is the purpose of this.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Reverend Golden.
Yes, just, so are we saying that when the CARES money does get here, it replaces these expenditures?
We have not seen the guidelines set before us yet for the CARES Act money. The state will be very clear on how we are able to use it and, and what the reimbursement procedures will be. We do believe they will have those guidelines for reimbursement, because again, not only are we using some dollars to buy some additional things, we've already spent, out of the general budget, $1.2 million. So we are hoping that that language will be there for replacing items. We just do not feel that we can wait until we receive those dollars to go ahead and get our purchases. But we are hopeful that we can use those dollars to replace what we've already spent.
Okay, I'm not talking about replacing the items, I'm talking about replacing...
Correct, our budget, yes. We are hopeful that we will be able to do that.
Okay. All right.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. I, the, I was going to say the vote option went away, but that's okay. We can vote anyway, so it'll just be a voice vote. All of those in favor of the categorical flexible spending, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to our next section, and that is new business, no superintendent recommendation. It was suggested that, and I think we've all seen, that there have been items that have come to us saying the superintendent has recommended things that the superintendent has not recommended to us. Not to say she doesn't support it, or she does support it, she just has no, say, one way or the other on it. And so it was suggested that we separate those two items and make a separate section of no superintendent recommendation to make it clear to the public, these things are not recommended by the superintendent. Does not mean she has taken a stance one way or another, it's just not recommended. I would, if, I don't know how anyone feels about that. It's here for today. If there's a different way someone would like to word it, or if we don't agree with doing this in the future, that's totally fine with me, but I'm putting it there for today to make it very clear that these things were brought forward by the board and they are not brought forward by the superintendent. And if, and if anybody doesn't agree with that, feel free to reach out to Mrs. Boyes, but I didn't see a better way to indicate that the superintendent has not made a decision on these two things, and it is really a board item. And so with that, I'm going to move forward. The first item.
My concern is...
Yeah.
...that there's a difference between no recommendation and opposition. If, if the superintendent makes a recommendation, it can be, and all of them so far, apparently she supports. So it's not a question of the superintendent supporting a recommendation...
Right.
...as opposed to opposing a recommendation. What I'm hearing you say is that this simply says that she has no recommendation, and there will be no inference whether she opposes it or not.
That would be my intention by that wording, but if, I am not the wordsmith, we've got several lawyers up here that I would imagine are, so that's why I'm saying if you can find a better way to phrase that, or if you do not agree with doing it this way, that's fine, I'm just going to ask that you reach out to Mrs. Boyes. I'm sure if there's a consensus one way or another, she will let me know.
I'm just concerned that if there is opposition, that she be allowed to verbalize that also.
Oh, I...
That, that's, that's the only thing. I, I don't want our superintendent trying to be politically correct with us. If she has no recommendation, that's one thing, but if she has opposition, I think she owes it to all of us to share that I oppose this, or I do not think that this is in the best interest of the district. And so notwithstanding that she has no recommendation, I think it's fair to ask her if whatever that item is, if she is opposed to that.
I think that's a great idea. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I see that Mr. Kennedy has signed up to speak.
I think that covers it. I was just going to suggest a different title, you know...
Sure.
...board, board action items, although that's every item on the agenda. So you're right, we can talk to Michelle about it and come up with something better. I thought this was a great way to, because this is board business, not the superintendent's business.
Yeah, that, that was suggested to me was board items, and my concern with board items was, it would, could imply to everyone that nothing else is a board item...
Right, right.
...or nothing else is board business, and it's all board business.
Exactly, yeah.
So I'm open to some other way to say it, but it's...
We could pontificate it later.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, if there's, if you can find a better way to say it, I'm, but...
When I saw the email with the update, I thought, I was like, "Well, that's very creative, that's a good way to do that," so...
I didn't come up with that title either, but, you know, I thought it was good. Inappropriate. I don't know what's going on with our sound. Is there someone on Teams that's, their speakers on, or can we mute them? Because it's kind of distracting. Is that possible?
Okay, I had two cookies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on then. This is the approval of the superintendent's evaluation. And I'm looking, I guess, for a motion on that, to approve her evaluation as it is.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I'm not so sure that there's any discussion. What were the results of the evaluation?
I think that is discussion.
Okay.
Would you like me to read that into the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me find it so that I can read it exact. So, the superintendent's evaluation for this year, rating all of our scores together, came out to a fi, or 3.553, which is a highly effective rating.
Thank you.
And so part of the motion of accepting her performance and accepting her evaluation would be accepting that, that is her overall score from the, all of the board members' scores at an average together. And Mr. Kennedy, I think you said you had a comment?
I do. Madam Chair, I don't, the, the summary document is attached, but our individual actual evaluations are not there. And so I'm looking for mine now, because I missed this detail. But when I was preparing for the meeting, so I'm sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once, I'm sorry, give me one second.
Well, can I move on to other people's comments and then come back?
No, I found, I'm good. I found it. So, um, under my, I have under goal four, which is communication, which is 15% of the total, but I have 3.75 there. And I believe, I, I have to go back and look at my actual, the document, but I think I meant to put in 3.25 there. And I say that because I've been harping about communication for, you know, years now. And, you know, district-wide, not just the superintendent, but this is the superintendent's evaluation, not a district evaluation. So, um...
Are you asking to change that?
I am asking to at least take a look at it, because I, I have a feeling that number is wrong, but...
So you're asking Mrs. Boys to look that up now?
I'm, that's what I, I was looking for mine.
Yeah.
But yeah, Michelle, if you don't mind, could you...
Okay. While she's doing that, are there any other comments?
Um, yeah.
Dr. Hopes?
I do have mine, because I put, amazingly enough, I put it on the, one of the drives. You know, first of all, I'd like to commend the superintendent for really her effectiveness this year. You know, each year we, we talk about this, there's some challenge that's come up that, that, you know, provides us with an opportunity to, to really see the, the skills and the talents that, that the superintendent brings to, to this organization. There was, there was one area, and she and I discussed it, and, and it's not at all a criticism, but I, I felt that one thing that we should be looking to do is, I know there's continuing education funding that's, that's available and available to the superintendent. And there were a couple of areas where, you know, if you recall, we kind of, she kind of got, got, you know, thrown into this swimming pool, our vast sea of uncertainty, and, you know, has done a great job, but I felt that this year, if we are not overwhelmed with challenges and crises, that I felt it would be beneficial to the organization and to the superintendent to, 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 you know, get away and, and get some professional development in the areas of organizational design and, and in kind of making executive management decisions. It's, it's, it's difficult at times when you're facing a lot of crises to prioritize hiring and delegation and things like that. And then with regards to the area of organizational design, to be able to, to, to have some insight with regards to structuring an organization to meet challenges, needs, and demands. And that's not something that comes naturally, and it's not necessarily something that she got in depth during her superintendent's course, which she mastered and completed, I think, well before the, the year. And so I would, I would just like to see us, us make further investment in, in continuing, you know, her executive development. And, and it's only meant to, it's something that I would do with any CEO at any level to look at, at making that investment and providing that professional development. But I couldn't be more pleased with, with her effectiveness and performance and, and the great new hires that she's made. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, I assume somebody else would have something to say. No, Michelle just, just got my copy and I, and I, as, as I suspected, and, and it is in my comments on, on my evaluation form, I lay out some, you know, some concerns that I have. So I guess, could we, because this is gonna require recalculation and so forth, so could make a motion to postpone this till our, to our next meeting? If, if it requires that? I mean, I'm not...
I'm not to wait.
I'm just waiting for a second.
Well, it's... Well, we may not have to, but...
I, I'm not hearing a second, so I think that motion dies.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
But I, I'm, if Mrs. Boys wants to recalculate, can you do that?
Yeah, I wonder if, like, she's got enough to do over there running a meeting.
I'm sorry.
Make her do, make her do math in the middle of a meeting.
Okay.
But I mean, it is a simple fix, and, and I would ask too that, um...
So is that the number that you put in, or is it not?
I, instead of putting 3.25, I put in 3.75, and didn't catch my own error until right now. Because in the comments of that item, I lay out some concern. Like, my comments don't match a 3.75, which I, I just saw. So I don't, I don't know how the board wants to handle this, or, I mean, I'm not even sure what the action item is that we're approving, like...
It is approving this. It is approving her evaluation.
Acceptance of the, the calculation.
The highly effective rating because of the scores that have been...
Okay.
...calculated. That is how I would interpret that.
Okay.
Um... Madam Superintendent.
If, if he wants to change that, we can, I mean, I, I'm not gonna speak, I'm sorry. You, you guys talk.
Okay.
However you wanna do.
I know you wanna speak, but Reverend Golden has signed up to speak, so I'm gonna go in the order of the people that signed up to speak. It will come back to you, you are next. Reverend Golden.
Thank you. Two comments. First, apparently we have now gone beyond accepting or not accepting the annual performance evaluation. And that's fine, if, if, if we wanna have that discussion. The other problem that I'm looking at is how the weights were established with respect to the goals. Forty percent for leadership management, 25 for high-quality instruction, 20 for continuous improvement, 15 percent. And I, I guess the, the issue for me is if, if, if this is an evaluation of all four of the goals, why are the goals not equally important? It, it, it requires more than just putting a number beside one of the goals. Because what happens is, and, and the reason I would oppose postponing this or making any adjustments because of any errors we've made, if I remember statistically correct, the statistics, if you change one of the parameters in this evaluation from a lesser, I'm sorry, from a higher to a lesser value, just mathematically, it's going to take away from the overall rating, even if it's not particularly noticeable. So I would oppose us correcting our mistakes here now at the expense of an evaluation that was prepared based on the input that we all had ample time to make. That's the first thing. The second thing is, how were these weighted values arrived at? Because as I look at this, when I look at goal number three, continuous improvement with only 20% of the total weight, that in fact, you could completely remove that by simply increasing the leadership management percentages that you have here by 10%. You come up with the same thing. You come up with the same ratios, you come up with the same percentages, and yet, what we're saying is she did good on goal one, goal two, and goal four, but she bombed completely on, on, on goal three. And I, I think that's, in, in my opinion, that's arbitrary in terms of how you arrive at her performance evaluation. Someone, I know I didn't participate, in creating these 40% of the total, 25% of the total, 20% of the total, or 15% of the total. And I, I'm, I'm asking, next year, since we're in this, can we give some thought to equalizing the, the formula so we get a better reading? And of course, all of us would be more careful next year in, in being able to look back on what we actually put in and what now has come out as a result of what we put in. I, I don't think it's fair after the fact. If it were the other way, I would have no problem. If you thought that the number that was actually there was less than the number that you actually gave, it could only improve her score. But I don't think that her score should be detracted from because of something that we acknowledged that we probably didn't do like we should. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Hopes.
I think I followed what Reverend Golden said, but I, I mean, I agree with those points, that, that we, we had an opportunity to review this. It shouldn't have been new to all of us, because we'd seen it before when we dealt with it months ago. But I, for, for Mr. Kennedy's benefit, although I haven't run the statistics, I think the change in, in the area that he's referring to, I don't think would change the highly effective rating. Therefore, if he wanted to change it mentally or physically, it, it, it would not statistically change the grade that, that was arrived at with all five of our, our inputs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I haven't had a chance to speak.
Oh, sorry.
I would like to speak. Number one, we did receive this superintendent evaluation form with those percentages attached in September of 2019. And so that was something that we did review, and if we wanna change it and review it differently for next year, I'm open to those conversations. But it is something that we all did have a conversation with the superintendent about. I even have Ms., Mrs. Collins' email, which says that, you know, we are supposed to meet with the superintendent to talk about it, and she was going to add in things that we wanted to work on, which she did. So I, I commend her for that. I, I do wanna say that I think that she is doing a wonderful job with the amount of things that she's had to overcome. It's, it's amazing. I do think that there will always be things that we can work on, and I think the, the biggest thing for me, and I talked to the superintendent about this, is about communication and making sure that we communicate as, as much and as well as possible to, especially our families. Sometimes decisions are being made and they don't even understand why the decision's being made. And it, you're not necessarily making the wrong decision, it's just they don't understand why that decision's even happening. And so I think we have to do better about communicating to families, we have to do better about communicating, even to the community, to make sure that we have that transparency out there of all the things that are going on. But I can't imagine anybody doing better in the situation that we have been in than our superintendent. It has been an insurmountable challenge to lead a team of 8,000 employees to drastically change their entire way of work and still make sure our students are learning, and albeit it was radically different and very difficult, I think, for a lot of families. And I think we're getting a lot of that feedback now. But I appreciate that there's surveys out there to even ask. So I just, I'm, I'm appreciative, and I think that, you know, you are doing the very best that I could expect in this, these circumstances. It's, it's just an impossible circumstance. So I wanna say thank you. And with that, Mr. Golden, Reverend Golden, you've signed up again.
Yes, I, I, I only wanna clarify, my concern is not with the raw percentages that are there. I do think it would be a better instrument if they were all even. But my concern is the weighted goal, that, I don't know how that got to be, one rating and then two rating and then three ra, that, my statistics is kind of fuzzy, because it's only 40 years old. But I'm just kind of concerned here that we are putting a lot of weight on leadership and management, which we're evaluating, and literally, her leadership and management skills are on display every day to the people that work for her. I, I would, I would much rather have more input into whether or not she's continuously improving, whether she's providing high-quality instruction, like you said, whether she's effectively communicating. And yet, all of those together, that's only 55% of the score, 60% of her score. So she could get to the top of her grade, to use teacher vernacular, she could get fours in all of those and still flunk the, still flunk it because of leadership goals, because 40% of that is weighted toward that. That's, that's my only point.
Okay.
Okay?
Vice Chair Kennedy.
Thank you. Michelle and I both did the math separately and came up with the same number, so I think we're good. Court is adjourned. The, by, by dropping, and this will go to Dr. Hopes's point too, by correcting myself, and this is my mistake and no one else's, my score for goal four, which is effective communication, if I take that to 3.25 with the weighting, my weighted, Mr. Minor, am I keeping you awake?
Yes.
Sorry, you can get up in bed soon. That takes my weighted average rating from 3.813 to 3.736, which is the same number that Michelle came up with as well, separately from me. So that is an overall drop of .077, which takes her overall score from 3.553 to 3.476. So, that's it.
Okay.
And also, Madam Chair, too, I think it would be, well, it doesn't matter, it's, it's fine. If somebody wants to, if somebody wants to see our individual evaluations, they can certainly request them from the district.
Yes. Dr. Hopes.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. This is kind of in response to, to Reverend Golden. First and foremost, this evaluation instrument is like light years ahead of what was used for the prior superintendent. And we, we had a number of discussions, I think it was before you were on the board, because it was during the period of engaging the superintendent as the interim superintendent, and we were talking about agreements. You know, one of the things that the agreement lacked was an effective instrument to, one, inform the superintendent how he or she was gonna be evaluated, but for that evaluation instrument to align with the goals the board was setting for the future for that superintendent. And the reason why the weighting in categories is different is because of the priorities and the emphasis that we wanted to place on the superintendent for the coming year. And to your point, this should not be a static document. We should meet again as a board in a workshop. We should work with the superintendent. As we arrived at this, what are your goals, superintendent, as our chief executive officer? And then we align the evaluation instrument with our agreed-upon mutual goals for the organization and the superintendent. And so, to your point, there, there, now, there may be a year where we decide that every category that we, we develop has an equal weight, and we, we, we balance it that way. But this is by, by far not unusual for a board who's hired a chief executive officer, a superintendent, to place a greater emphasis by weight on certain requirements, objectives, accomplishments. And, and so I think this instrument's worked well for this year, but I do believe that every year after we do this, we should, as early as possible for the future year, meet as a board with the superintendent and agree upon those goals and objectives and the weight of, of each of those goals in, in, in evaluating her performance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that clarification, because... I appreciate that clarification, because as a static document, uh, maybe, uh, I'm sorry, as a living document, maybe when you all adopted it, leadership was, was very crucial. I know you, you all were coming off of some very trying times. Before that, we had a lot of challenges, a lot of acronyms I won't bring up now, but that, that... So if we're going to have an opportunity to change that, fine. I, I don't really have any objection, obviously, to the evaluation. I just think it ought to be relative to the circumstances. Right now, I would much rather spend more effort evaluating on the continuous improvement. I don't know how she's going to keep up this pace with the stellar work that she's done to bring us through the crisis, but... So we, and we'll discuss that, probably in a workshop mode, at an appropriate time as we prepare to, uh, to, to go, to go forward. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I didn't ask to be recognized.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have to clear up one more mistake I just made. Thank you, Kelly, wherever you are in the building, for correcting me. I don't think she intended to correct me, but she sent me the correct numbers, because what I did is I took that point zero seven seven and subtracted it, but that's actually a weighted average. So I shouldn't, I should do a new average, not just subtract a number. So that, um, it's not three point four, whatever I just said. It's actually, the new number is three point... No, it's too big. Can't fit it on my screen now.
Five three eight.
Thank you, three point five three eight. So it's not three point four something, it's still three point five three eight. I just wanted to correct the record. And I was today years old when I took my first statistics class. So even, uh, more recently than Dr. Golden. So thanks, Gina, that's it.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the superintendent's annual performance evaluation for the nineteen, or two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please hit your green buttons. Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we will move on to the next item. That is item number two, and it is approval of increase in charter school funding from the referendum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Not twice in a row.
Okay, hearing none. That motion fails for a lack of a second. Let's move on to item number three. Uh, that is, it'd be approval letter, uh, approval of letters of engagement with Cherry Beckett? Let's see, I got that one this time. To provide financial auditing services for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, SDMC number twenty dash zero one zero two dash RG, not to exceed one hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'm just going to ask Dr. Hopes, uh, I know you were part of the committee that chose this company. Would you like to share any other information about this company?
Yes.
For the public to know, or for the board to know?
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you. Members, as, as you recall, uh, this, uh, you know, the process of identifying a financial auditor, this is the first year we've done it in accordance with the new state statutes. It called for a audit selection committee that is chaired by a member of the board. And we followed that process. As you may recall, we placed every member of the board's audit committee on the auditor selection committee. And, and I was chosen for this year to be the, the liaison to the audit committee. Uh, and as part of that, the, the chair of the auditor selection committee. We had a very thorough procurement, request for proposals from auditing firms. Uh, we received, uh, uh, three credible proposals. Cherry Beckett was the, the number-one-ranked firm. Uh, they are probably one of the, the largest regional firms. And of all the firms, uh, they, they did more larger school districts and school district audits, uh, across the southeast, including Florida. Uh, this go-around, we had, even though it was virtual, uh, we had an opportunity to meet with a majority of their staff, their managing partners, as well as their, uh, even, uh, you know, younger-level accountants and auditors that will be working on the project. And, and after that, uh, interview with, with Cherry Beckett, it was decided to recommend them as the number-one-ranked firm. Uh, and this board at our prior board meeting, uh, of the three firms that were brought to us, and according with statutes, we selected Cherry Beckett. We went through a negotiating process, and this, uh, engagement letter is a result of that. And, um, I will tell you both, you know, from a professional perspective, and the, the recommendation of our auditor selection committee, uh, that we think that we will get, uh, exceptional service out of them. They'll be out of their Tampa office. Uh, the auditors we had before were principally, uh, being driven out of the Orlando office. And, uh, we think that we will get far more, um, service from them, from a, uh, a, a real staff on the ground and senior, uh, managing partner input, um, moving forward. So, uh, I appreciate and highly recommend this, um, engagement letter's approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of, um, the approval letter of engage, uh, approval of the letter of engagement with Cherry Burkett, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, item number four. And that is approval of professional services contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC to provide internal audit services, uh, for fiscal year 2020, 2021, uh, SDMC number nineteen dash zero zero seventy-nine dash RG, not to exceed three hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yeah, sure, Dr. Hopes.
Uh, members, Madam Chair, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, uh, was, uh, as you know, has been our internal auditor for some time. The audit committee, again, uh, met and determined that, uh, they were satisfied with their services. There was, I will bring up a point. There was one member of, of the audit committee, uh, that was somewhat concerned that there wasn't a, uh, a, a clause in the agreement with regards to, upon the board's hiring a staff internal auditor, uh, which would most likely reduce the workload on the contracted internal auditor, that those fees would be adjusted. In reality, these are, uh, a not-to-exceed budgeted amount. Uh, the hourly rates are extremely fair hourly rates. Uh, they understand that, uh, we will be bringing on a board's staff internal auditor that will help to, uh, reduce the reliance and the demand on the outside firm. It's something that they have been part of, uh, so, as long as I've been on the board, because I made it clear, uh, really, before I was ever appointed to the board by the governor, that, that I felt we needed to begin transitioning some of the services that we were buying from an outside internal auditor to bring it into a staff position for that very reason. So this agreement, uh, in working with our contracting department, and I, I want to thank Ruth for, for all the work that she's done. Uh, it, it does protect the district. Uh, this is only a budgeted amount, and, you know, if, if, if things go well, uh, we will continue to rely less on an outside firm and, and be able to rely more on our staff internal auditor. Uh, so with that, I, I do ask that you approve the, uh, professional services contract with Carr, uh, Riggs, and Ingram tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we will vote on internal audit, audit services, uh, provided by Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, not to exceed three hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, the next item is really a discussion item. Um, it's a discussion of a school board statement on racial injustice and recent events. Since there is no motion for one person to speak first, I'm just going to go with who initiated this. And it was my understanding that, um, the superintendent requested this item be placed on our agenda, so I'm going to ask the superintendent to start us off.
Yes, uh, and, and really, it is in concert, uh, with Board Member Vice Chair Kennedy. Uh, as we all know, that recent events have, uh, been in the media. We're all well aware of, uh, the current situation. And, uh, that, that's happened. And I really felt, uh, compelled, as well as, uh, Vice Chair Kennedy, that we need to have a position. We need to make a statement regarding what is occurring, what our position is going to be in supporting our district and our educational foundation of moving forward, so that, uh, you know, the, the community understands where we stand. Uh, they know where we're coming from. We know how we feel about the recent events. Uh, I had, uh, conversations with our cultural diversity, uh, committee yesterday. Uh, we put forth, uh, Mr. Barber had, uh, a draft statement, and we offered, uh, input. And we have given, uh, a couple of versions. I know Mr. Kennedy also has one of just places to start talking, because the hope is that we can walk away today with an overall board sentiment of how we feel and what our stand's going to be in terms of equality, justice, how we feel about racism in, in general. Um, so we've, I've given you a couple of statements, I believe. Mr. Kennedy also has a draft of a statement, so that the board can discuss, and collectively, we can come up with how, how we, as a unit, as a district and a board, feel about recent events.
So just to clarify for my own clarification, this is the one that I was sent earlier today.
Right.
This is another one from the district, or is this from someone else?
Uh, it's another one that came in from, uh, the cultural diversity committee today.
Okay.
And, um, and then, uh, Mr. Kennedy was on there.
Yeah.
He also worked with, uh, some, some people on the committee, or had conversations with a number of people. And so it, it's a place to start with the collective board finalizing a, a position.
Thank you. And I see the CK version. So there's, there's three in front of us. Uh, I've only really had the opportunity to fully read the first one that I got today. So I'm going to give maybe the board a couple of minutes to just review all three, if that would be a preference for everyone.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Where's the one that says CK version?
I have one that says, it says it up here. Do you have that?
No.
It was handed out earlier, I think.
It, it, it has a statement at the top that says, "SDMC Statement of Support for Racial Injustice."
CK version on that.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I apologize, but do you, do you know which one it is? Then you're going to have to write CK version on it, all by yourself.
Quite honestly, I think this was done intentionally and purposely by Mr. Kennedy.
It was.
To keep me in the dark and not have me fully informed on...
He told me that was his plan. It's really awkward, you figured it out like...
Is it all right if, is it all right if I write CK version?
I think you should, I think that's totally appropriate.
I can write that on here myself. Okay. I don't have any jeopardy.
I like that, instead of Charlie CK.
Probably signs stuff on his emails.
Yeah, that sounds kind of cool.
I'm going to take this big pen with this flower on it.
All right.
And I'm going to write on it, CK version.
That's what mine says.
Well, I, we've already settled that, 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 that he, he intentionally left mine out. Okay.
I'm going to give everybody maybe one more minute. Is everybody ready to start discussion, or would you like me to recess the meeting for another five minutes? I'm looking for a, what would everybody prefer?
Move on.
I see that people are making lots of notes, but unless we share what each other are making notes on, you could all be making notes on the same thing. So we can either have that conversation, or we give it another five minutes, and I can recess the meeting for five minutes.
I'm good either way. I'm ready to go.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Can I just make a couple of comments regarding draft number two?
Hold on. Before we do that, I just want to make sure that Reverend Golden is ready to hear whatever your comments are.
Okay. I'm very happy to wait.
Reverend Golden, would you like us to recess the meeting, give you another couple of minutes, or are you ready to have a discussion?
I'm fine. This is fine.
You're ready?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Minor, why don't you start us off then?
Okay. I think that everybody here supports the content of all of these drafts. I think we're all united in grieving the violence, the racism that is in our culture, and we see on TV, we feel. Where I come from is, it's just, it's a great cultural tragedy that we should be all committed to amending as we go along. And it's part of our challenge as human beings and caring, and that's been part of my life. That's where I come from. What, in number two, these are some comments I have about it. One, I like brevity. I think this is the shorter of the three. The, I would suggest some changes in number two. Let me read where we are with this. "We have equality, justice, and inherent respect for each and every individual are integrals to the elements of the educational mission of the School District of Manatee County." Period. I think it's hard for anyone to argue with that sentence. That concerns. "As such, we oppose all forms of racism and racial injustice, and stand with those who grieve the needless and brutal deaths of..." Deaths of, and then we have black Americans. Now, let me talk about the black Americans in there. I'm not a black American. I've had a life that, you know, has involved black Americans to help them get a better education on a personal level. And when I say on a personal level, instead of going to a rock and roll camp when I was in college, I acted as mother, sister, brother, you know, for four kids in an ABC program, which involved, with these four students, three of them were black. Getting them up in the morning, taking them to practice, taking them to classes, taking them to exercise, taking them to concerts, taking them to theaters, feeding them all meals, putting them to bed, saying their prayers. They were my kids. And they were from different parts of the country, including one from Bedford-Stuy, who, Joe, who, you know, these were like thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids, who came to this education, and these were, he was always wearing gloves. I may have told you this story. Why, Joe, are you always wearing gloves? He said, "I always wear gloves, so I don't leave fingerprints." I said, "Well, that's worthy good." I just kind of passed that along, but... And I, always in college, through Sunday School, through going to communities where the education wasn't very good, to Tudor, down in Springfield, this is while I was at Amherst. I was the only white person at a service for Martin Luther King on Okinawa after he died. But, getting back to this script here, and brutal deaths of, I would just have brutal deaths resulting from overt oppression and unequal treatment under the law. Now, we have in the first draft, black Americans. How about brown Americans, Indian Americans? The focus in the moment was Mr. Floyd, but I think that we have, it's with all people, resulting from overt oppression and unequal treatment under the law. That would be a change I would suggest. Paragraph two, "The School District is fully committed to transforming anger, frustration, and despair into meaningful and lasting change." I don't think anybody has an argument with that. "We will use all of our considerable resources and influence to educate, encourage, and enhance love, understanding, and empathy for all people." I don't think there's an argument with that. "We will do so in our classrooms. We will do so in our lunchrooms, in common gathering areas, and we will do so in our playing fields, in our gymnasiums, in our locker rooms, and in every corner and corridor of this community that we reach and touch." I don't think anybody has any arguments with that sentence or anything in that paragraph. Then, the third paragraph, I would change the first word from that to this. I would just say, "This commitment is a primary goal of our new strategic plan." And, I put a comma there. "And it is at the core of our mission and purpose." Period. I don't think anybody has an argument with that. And then we just have, "We, Manatee, we are the School District of Manatee County." Period. Now, these are all good. I mentioned small changes that I would suggest in there. I like it because it's short, but I think it covers what we want to say to the community, what we want to say about ourselves. And so, that's the draft I favor, but I really appreciate all those who put this together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it sounds like Mr. Minor has a few minor changes to draft two, but he favors draft two. Does someone else like to make a comment on these? Obviously, we know which one you favor, Mr. Kennedy.
No, not at all.
The CK version.
No, actually, let me just back up and talk about where I was coming from with this, and how we got here. And as usual, this was community members coming to me, pushing me to push the board to do something, to speak in this moment. And so, I want to thank those community members, because I was sitting at home in my safe world, horrified by what I was seeing on the news and reading online, but without consciously thinking it, living in a world where this doesn't touch me. And so, I want to thank those community members for waking me up to say, "We have a school district full of black and brown employees. In this case, in this moment, the reason for this moment, it's not about black, whites, and Indians, it's about black people. It's about African-Americans." So, just the power of this moment, it was really, truly a wake-up call, and I've said this many times before, excuse me. I want to time myself, so I wouldn't go over five minutes, and I want to set it for five seconds, but... So, anyway, one of the things, and I talked to the superintendent, I think, Saturday morning, and we exchanged some ideas. She said, "I'm going to bring this to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee on Monday, and then we'll bring it to the board on Tuesday, and the board can decide what y'all want to do." So, my statement that I initially drafted, and it's really, and it's changed through input from others, it has changed even significantly from what I sent to the superintendent on Saturday morning, but I'll come back to that. So, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee meets on Monday, and had some really powerful, meaningful feedback, which is captured, excuse me, in what I'll call draft one, which is the piece that's, I'll just call them one, two, and three. Your CK copy is three. I'll call this one. And one of those pieces of feedback from the committee was that you have to talk in a statement that you put out, you have to tell the community, what are you going to do? What are the action steps? Empty promises and platitudes only is going to do more damage. Talk about concrete steps, which I didn't do in my draft. So, I think that is really important. I think including phone numbers and community resources that our employees, that our students, that our families can access if they are struggling, because 2020 is a lot to bear right now. And, but, you know, we were already dealing with COVID, but it was the murder of George Floyd that brought us to this point where we are. It wasn't the murder of a white person. It was another murder of an African-American on the street that we all witnessed ourselves, whether on TV or on media, whatever, you know, social media, whatever. So that's why, in my draft, I included the names of the people, the three people I feel like have brought us to this moment. George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery. So I thought, I knew that first paragraph in my draft was strong, but I intended it to be strong, because this is, that first paragraph is why we are here, and I finished that first paragraph with, "It's in our, our policy is clear, we do not and will not tolerate racism of any kind." Now, where I think the draft one, which is the product of input from the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, it goes into specific things the district is going to do going forward to address this. You'll notice that on draft one and draft three, the paragraph above the community resources is almost exactly the same. In fact, on draft one, that paragraph was my original paragraph, and then I changed it to what you see in draft three. So personally, I would say, I would prefer, I'm just one of five, I would prefer a combination of kind of the power and the strength of, and I'm not tooting my own horn, but like, the reason for this, the board making this statement, and then going to draft one, these are the steps we're going to take, and here are the resources that are available to you. And, Mr. Minor, I do agree with you on one thing. I think brevity is important, especially when you're releasing a statement like this, but sometimes brevity doesn't capture everything you want to say, because we want to convey to the community, especially to our African-American students and families, that this will not be tolerated in this community, in this, excuse me, in the school district, because we can only speak for the school district. This will not be tolerated. It's in our policy. Here's our steps, here are steps we're going to take. Here are resources you can access. Close. So it's a little bit longer than you probably like for a statement, but I think draft number one does a pretty good job of fitting a lot in. I mean, I would wordsmith it a little bit, but I think it does a pretty good job of fitting in the action, the action that the district is going to take. I especially like the reference to, "We will also ensure that the Florida Law Enforcement Academy at MTC will review and evaluate their training practices to include appropriate restraining techniques and proper responses to violent encounters." So I would advocate for a slight combo of draft one and three. And honestly, like I said, I was kind of woken up to this by thoughtful community members, because last week, Hillsborough came out with a statement, then Miami-Dade did, then Duval did. So really, I mean, by the time we get this thing out, we're two weeks late already, and I think that's a, you know, for our community, that's not acceptable, but at least we're trying to relay a statement of our policy, what our beliefs are, what we're going to do, and if you are struggling, or if you need help, here's how to get the help. So, that's it for now.
So it sounds as if you favor draft one with some pieces of your own intertwined.
Correct.
Okay. I have one from Dr. Hopes or Reverend Golden.
Let Dr. Hopes speak.
Dr. Hopes.
Thank you. I think, you know, many, if not all of us, are troubled by recent events. I really appreciate Mr. Minor's thoughtful edits and comments to draft number two. I think, you know, first and foremost, the board is a policymaking entity, and any statement coming from the board, I believe, should best represent the, in the situation, the district's attitude. I don't believe, at this particular time, we should present action that the district's going to take until we evaluate those actions and whether or not we're even doing it. I believe the Law Enforcement Academy is already teaching these comments, and to make a comment saying we're going to do it implies that we're not doing it, and I believe we are. I mean, I spent time at the Law Enforcement Academy when we were pursuing both the Guardian Program and others. I believe that I could support draft number two, because it is an expression of what I think we can all gather around. I realize these recent events are around one particular incident that was horrible and disgusting, and shouldn't occur anywhere in the world, much less the United States. But really, you know, we're here for all of the children in Manatee County. We're here for all of our employees. And I appreciate the district's Culture and Diversity Committee for the work they've done, you know, with regards to putting phone numbers and contacts. I mean, we have those in other places. We can certainly put them on the website as general information. I believe each of us, as an elected official, certainly has a right to put out their own statement about the position that they take as an elected official, with whatever detail we individually want to put into it. But I don't believe that the board should be used as any kind of instrument for any individual group. I think the current events are horrible. I mean, no doubt about it. But I really, I have a problem if, in this short period of time, the board is going to put out a statement that has detailed steps and tasks that we're going to take, because we spend hours developing and having discussions and workshop around, you know, changing specific policies, or giving the superintendent a list of action items that we want her to take. So, you know, I'm comfortable with draft number two as edited by Mr. Minor, which I think is superb forethought. I think it clearly states the generalized mission and goal of educating the youth and policies around, you know, overt oppression and unequal treatment. I mean, it's not unlike the, for two or three years, we continued to hear from the Jewish community about teaching the Holocaust. I guarantee you, if we had, you know, if we taught in detail all the horrid things that have happened to that particular, you know, cultural and ethnic group over centuries, it would wake people up, and maybe we'd have less of what's going on now. But I, and I don't think we should make this about one individual. This is a problem that should not be occurring in this country in this day and age, and I agree with you. But I don't think we should sit here today and come out with action steps that we direct the district, and I believe we should... that we direct the district, and I believe we should have a, a very compelling, a very emotional statement, and I think that's, that's represented in, in Draft Number Two. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. As edited by Mr. Minor.
Okay, so it sounds like there's more support for Draft Number Two. Mr. Minor, can you review those edits one more time? I understood that you wanted to change the word "that" to "this."
Okay. Uh, first paragraph, I had no suggestions of change to.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
I'm sorry. I'll, I'll speak up better. Thank you for, uh, paragraph one would remain the same.
Okay.
Paragraph. I don't remember. Let, let me read paragraph one again. "The school district of Manatee County stands together with our students, families, community."
Hold on. That is, that is, that is Draft Number.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. You're, you're, you're right. I was wrong.
I just want to understand what your, what your edits were.
Okay, that, you're, you're correct. And, and, um, Draft Number Two, uh, and Dr. Hope's is right. In the first paragraph, uh, it's on the last line, um, it would read, it would take out the word "black America," the words "black Americans," so that that free, it would read, that would be part of a sentence that reads, "As such, we oppose all forms of racism and racial injustice and stand with those who grieve the needless and brutal deaths resulting from overt oppression and unequal treatment under the law."
So you, to remove the words?
Black Americans.
And the word "of."
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then the other edit was, was the second to last sentence, changing the word "that" to "this."
Yeah, "This commitment is a primary goal of our strategic plan, and it is core of our mission."
Okay. Okay. So I wanted to make sure you understood.
That, that was, those are the only changes I had in Number Two.
Okay. Okay. I haven't heard from Reverend Golden yet, so I want to make sure that I'm being equal. But I wanted to understand also what the edits were, because Dr. Hope's referenced them. Reverend Golden, would you like to speak, or would you like me to go next?
I didn't know whether he was finished or not.
No, I was trying, I was just replying to the Chair's question.
Had you finished your answer?
Yes, I, I, I've answered her question.
I do not, um, support, um, any of the drafts that have been submitted because they don't require us to do anything other than make a statement. In lieu of, uh, that, uh, I propose that we consider as a Board to increase, uh, for the next five years, funding of our diversity efforts, uh, in the school system for black, Hispanic, Jewish, LGBTQ, uh, programs. Whatever we use as a base year, that we increase that by 100% each year for the next five years. Number two, that we will ban in Manatee County the teaching of the use of chokeholds and neckholds as a legitimate law enforcement technique. I believe that's under the jurisdiction of Mr. Wagner. Uh, is that, MTI is under your jurisdiction? Is that right? Okay. And, and, and I want to ban the use or the teaching of that in, uh, in our institutions in law enforcement. The third thing is that we require every child in this, uh, county to, uh, take a government class before graduation. And I want every 18-year-old, and I think I've already talked with, uh, I don't see him here, the strategic, uh, planning person.
Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chapman. Every opportunity in our government class, when you turn 18, uh, that you will, um, become registered to vote. We're doing all this talking up in here, and ain't none of us been out on the streets with these 25-year-olds and 20-year-old people who are throwing away their health, given the coronavirus, who are, who are marching all over this country, trying to get older people like myself to try to cope with the, the vagaries of racism in this country that has existed for 400 years. George Washington is no doubt the founding father of this country, and no doubt the history of America can largely be attributable to what he did 200-plus years ago. But George Floyd is the father of the future of this country, and he paid for it with his life. With his neck, with the neck of another human being on him, because that was a legitimate law enforcement technique. The very least that we can do as a school system is to outlaw the teaching of that to law enforcement officers, uh, in this, uh, in this county. Thirdly, uh, no adult in this county will use any method of restraint that could result in fatalities to a student unless they are directly threatened. So we're not going to have any more students thrown across the room. We're not going to have any more students hit in the face, and there will be zero tolerance for violence in our school system. Zero. And the last thing that I had here, um, is that, oh, I'm sorry, and that we will support, that we will enact personnel policies that reflect that we have a zero tolerance for violent acts in our schools. By anybody. Student, staff, parent, it, it doesn't matter. So that, that's what, uh, that's what as a Board, as a school Board, we can do. This that you've written here, any, any kid with a 12th grade English capacity can do that. Anybody can write, and nobody's going to read it. And particularly the young people who are out there on the streets, who are trying to make a difference, they're not going to believe that this is going to make a difference. So no, I, I don't, I'm, 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 I'm through talking. If you want to do something, I'll take all of this, and I'll make it in a motion. And if I get a second, and if it gets passed, that's fine. But this is where I stand. All, all, you telling me you're opposed to racism? Let me, let me, let me explain something so that we'll be very clear going forward from here. America is a racist society. That's what it is. And the people who perpetuate that are of two kinds. White racists, who believe that I am inferior to them. And white supremacists, who believe that they are superior to me, and they are not the same thing. That's not the same thing. And one does not excuse the other. They both impact people of color in this country in a negative way across the board. Not only in education, not only in public, uh, not only in criminal reform, not only in economic development, not only in housing, not only in opportunity, but throughout this land, and it has been that way for 400 years. So no, it didn't start with a black man having his breath taken out of his body by a rogue police officer who was the training officer for those other three officers. No, it didn't start there. But what started there was the way back. I, I'm, I'm happy that we've had all of this conversation and all of this dialogue. But if you really mean it, do something that you can do. Get out of your comfort zone, get away from your platitudes, and get away from this idea that all we got to do is talk about it, and it'll make a difference. It won't. You want to do something? You change that government course that we've got here that requires children to get involved, so that we don't have 20% of the people electing our officials. You want, you want, you want, you want to do something? Send this, a deputy superintendent out there and tell them, "Take that out of the curriculum. We don't teach that in Manatee County." I've already spoken. Thank you for your report from the School Board Association today. I spoke earlier today with the Executive Director of that School Board Association, and this is one of the things that we are proposing, that this course be required. This is one of the ways to get young people engaged in a positive way. So we're going to do this. Whether this Board does something or not, I thank God that there are some people that want to do something, other than sit around and wordsmith what a lot of other people have spent a lot of good time doing. And don't go out here and tell people where Reverend Golden denigrated what we wrote. That's not the point. The point is, we're a school Board, and we've been asked to do something. This is a, this is a cry for help. This is a cry for leadership. Let's demonstrate it. Let's do something. So no, I, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not, this is not, this is not doing enough. I don't care how we wordsmith it and how much we try to fix it up and make it look good. It doesn't change anything. Not even, not even anybody's mind. Want to do something? Do something. Don't pretend. Don't, don't keep, don't keep acting like it. And yes, let's, let's get the record straight. I am upset. That's why I wanted to sit, sit here and, and see just, just what was going to be said. I've heard this all my life. I've heard people all my life talk about how bad black people get treated. And then want to know, what can we do about it? Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I know this is a discussion, so I don't assume that this is going to in any way result in any kind of a vote here, except possibly on that, uh, the papers that we are wordsmithing here. And I've, I've already, I'm, I'm through, I'm through voting for papers. That, 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 that wouldn't do me right. My spirit, my Father in Heaven would look down and feel badly that that's the best I could do. So I'm doing what I know to do. This doesn't mean a thing unless you are prepared to do something. So I, you know what? We're in a meeting. I move that the curriculum that is being used to teach law enforcement officers in Manatee County be specifically and particularly, from this day forth, exclude teaching the techniques of chokeholds and neckholds as a legitimate law enforcement restraint technique. That's my motion.
I certainly second that. I'm, I'm not sure that's probably not being taught right now anyway, but I would second that motion.
No, it's not being taught, sir. That is not being taught. You just heard somebody here say that that is legally being taught. That's why it's being used. It's not outlawed. Ask Mr., what, 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 ask Mr. Chapman, who's already investigating.
So there's been a motion and a second. The motion on the table is to ban the use of chokeholds and neckholds. Did I understand that?
Teaching that, that, at the law enforcement, uh, curriculum at, uh, at, um, MTIs. You can start there.
Okay. Um, I would really like, I haven't had a chance to speak on any of this yet, but I'd really like, since that's the motion on the table, I'd really like to hear from Mr. Wagner. I don't know if he knows about this specific thing being taught, but can you come and give us feedback about that? So that I, I mean, this is not my area of expertise. I would not know what is taught or what is not taught.
Absolutely. And, you know, so our, our law enforcement program, we're one of 40 in the, 41 in the state of Florida that has it. It's a 490-hour program. Uh, we have an advisory council made up of the sheriffs and the chiefs here in Manatee County, who work with our instructors. Uh, in the program, um, for the 490 hours, we have a number of different, uh, competencies that students have to learn. Interaction with a diverse community, interviewing and report writing, fundamentals of patrol, calls for service, criminal investigation, crime scene to courtroom, traffic stops, DUI traffic stop, traffic crashes, CMS law enforcement, Beagle operations, uh, first aid, criminal justice firearms, proficiency, criminal justice defensive tactics, and dart firing stun guns. So those are the areas. As far as the specifics, if, you know, where we are on the chokeholds, you know, I can surely get further information on that, but as far as it's, uh, you know, so I can't answer your question exactly tonight if that, what part of defensive tactics is taught or required by the Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission, you know? So it's, it is a framework that we follow from the state. Uh, we have to follow it. If that's a recommendation that we no longer teach that, you know, it should be something that goes to the Advisory Council that talks about it with the sheriffs and the chiefs and those who organize, help organize our program.
I have another question. Is the Advisory Council, is that an open meeting that Reverend Golden could actually attend?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, I see that Dr. Hope's has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Wagner, the, as you mentioned, our Law Enforcement Academy is one of 40, 41, 42 in the state. And, uh, is our academy accredited from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement with regards to the credentials they leave with, qualify them, uh, as having achieved that?
They do.
That, uh, that credential. So wouldn't it be, um, appropriate to assume that if one of the FDLE's requirements is a particular intervention style or whatever, and if this Board were to say that our academy can't teach something that may or may not be required by the FDLE, we could put our program at a disadvantage if this Board directly directed something to be taught or not taught that is not in compliance with FDLE certification?
It could be, absolutely. I mean, so we have to follow, we have to follow their guidelines. We have to make sure that our program is certified. Uh, we have to go through the accreditation process, just like all the other, uh, training agencies in the state. You know, if this is something that, that, uh, that you're thinking about making this recommendation, then my vote would be to have, you know, have our law enforcement, uh, instructors here so they can answer detailed questions. Or if you'd like to come out to MTC and meet them on-site, so we can see, uh, the level of, uh, of training that we're talking about.
Uh, Madam Chair, look, I'm not an expert in this. I, I do understand the accrediting process and what's required. And while I think it's a, a worthy effort, we're not in a position today to actually vote on this motion without knowing whether or not it's, it's appropriately defined, whether FDLE requires it. Um, I mean, I think it's a, it sets a dangerous precedent for, for us to, uh, prohibit something. First of all, we don't even know if it's even being addressed, uh, but we're getting into an area that embarks upon the accreditation of a program, and I just, I don't think we're in a position to, at least I'm not. I have, I don't have that expertise. So, members, I don't, I don't think we should, uh, pass something without having appropriate feedback. I think it's a, 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 a good advice by Mr. Wagner for Reverend Golden to, to take his, his, uh, suggestion to the committee and, and let them provide the Board with feedback. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Reverend Golden, you signed up to speak?
That is exactly what I am not going to do, and that is exactly why I'm here right now. I've come for such a time as this. You will decide. I stand by my motion, because if they are not doing it, then the motion is moot. They don't have to stop doing anything. If they are doing it, and it is not something that is not sanctioned as it may well be, then it's a good motion. And if it is something that we cannot do, we're going to find that out because the Advisory Council of the Sheriff who gets elected and the police chiefs who get appointed by the people who are elected to the city councils around here, and the legislators who have the ability to change this requirement, which by the way is something that's- who have the ability to change this requirement, which by the way is something that's being asked, what I'm asking you to do with me, with me, take a stand. That's all. This is not right. If you think chokeholds are a legitimate way of restraining people who are in lawful custody, then vote against this motion, 'cause that's what it's about. I'm asking that we pursue changing the curriculum for law enforcement. That's all. If it's not necessary, then we've spent a lot of time voting on a motion that wasn't necessary, Reverend Golden. If it is necessary, then we've become the tip of the spear. And I'm, and, and that, that, you see, we always get here, well, let's, so what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna go to the sheriff that does use chokeholds. I'm gonna go to the law enforcement people that do use these things and ask them, do you think it's a good idea that we change? How far am I gonna get with that? That's why these young people are out there in the streets right now. So I'm, I stand by my motion. I appreciate your input, but what I really want you to do is if I get three votes on this, I want you to go to the advisory council. And I want you to tell them that the board said, we are not teaching this anymore in Manatee County. And I want them to tell you, oh, yes, we are. I don't think so. That's, doesn't that place come under the jurisdiction of this school board?
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wagner.
So, uh, Mr. Romine, who's our Director of Law Enforcement, he did text me back, 'cause I texted him when this conversation started. And he just texted me back. He said, we don't teach it at MTC, so.
All of that. My second motion.
Wait, hold on. We're still on the first one. Are you gonna pull back your second and your motion?
No, I'm gonna withdraw that motion since I have it on the record that we do not.
On your second?
No, I'm not.
Oh, you, oh, you don't trust Romine? I, I don't know. Okay, I don't know.
No, 'cause I, you, you, you have convinced me. I, I'm waiting to speak, but I'll be quick.
He just said it's, it doesn't.
He said that they don't teach it.
I know, I know. Um, I'm, I'm just, I would like to address this motion.
Sure.
Happy to withdraw my second?
Okay.
Um, as I said in my comments, what I thought was important were action steps, and that's what Reverend Golden is getting at. Let's take action. That's why I seconded this. I said right away with my second, I doubt we're teaching this, but Reverend Golden is correct. Hey, great if we're not. We did all this for a moot motion, but if we are, we've got a motion in place to make, to, to make change that this board can be responsible for making. So, um, I will withdraw my second, but I, and I heard Sheriff Wells on a roundtable, I think it was on ME TV. Um, and Sheriff Wells addressed the roundtable, uh, you can see it on YouTube, um, that these are not proper training techniques. No, he, I, I don't wanna quote him directly, but the, the essence of it was, no law enforcement agency trains their officers to put their knee on the neck of a restrained citizen. Um, this was a police officer who was way outside of his training. Um, so, but I'm, I'm, I'm proud of a second emotion, even though it might be moot, but I will withdraw it, and Reverend Golden can withdraw his motion.
Thank you. I move
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That the government course that is offered to every senior in Manatee County uh, include as a part of its curriculum that, uh, eight, when, at upon arriving at eighteen years of age, uh, every child will be, uh, uh, given the opportunity to register to vote on that eighteenth birthday as a part of that class.
I'll second that, too.
Okay.
That is a po- that, that would be, that would be a policy, as I understand it from the superintendent. That would have to be a policy that we would have to, to create.
Okay, so that was a motion, and the motion was that the government class that's taught to include um, that when a student arrives at eighteen years of age, that they would have the opportunity to register to vote?
That's right, under the auspices of the school, in that, in that class.
In the class?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I see that Madam Superintendent would like to respond to that.
Uh, we easily can embed that in the student progression plan, as Charlie said, so you don't have to make a separate policy, because that is a poli- you have to vote and approve the student progression plan. So that will be the quickest way to get it before the board. Right now, we do partner with the League of Women Voters. They go in and they set up tables and work with students, but it's more a voluntary basis. It's not, it's more of a passive act instead of a specific act, uh, that you're going to do as part of that government class. So, uh, we will work with the proper language so that it is, uh, a bit more direct than what we've been doing. Uh, we do go generally through the government classes, but, uh, we can put some language in there that's going to, uh, make it more formal and, uh, how we'll work with them and, and make sure that we're in every class, uh, unless a student, uh, it's against their religious beliefs.
Yes.
Uh, we will make it part of the class where they are able to register to vote, uh, if they turn eighteen in the class.
Through the League of Women Voters, not?
Well, that's what we've done in the past, 'cause someone will ha- well, no, they come into our schools.
Right, I understand that. The school district is not gonna be collecting those, those documents, what you're saying.
We partner with either the supervisor of elections, a voter registration office, but generally, we've used the League of Women Voters in, in the past, so we'll make sure we use the language, but we, we partner with that agency. That brings all the cards. I don't know if Charlie, if you remember when you were in the classroom and?
Absolutely. It was always the League of Women Voters, yeah.
Right.
But they have no, the, the, like she said, this is a volunteer effort, and I'm trying to make this a part of the curriculum, which is under the jurisdiction of the supervisory elections, 'cause that's who is responsible for registering voters. Again, I'm asking you to do something that I know is being done in some of the counties to the south of us through the school districts. But what we're trying to do here is to change the outlook and the attitude that our young people have toward voting and being involved in the political process. Protest is a language of the unheard. And right now, we have an opportunity to gather the attention of young people and put it where, in a proper way, where it should be. Where it should be. Including the five of us who are elected constitutional officers.
Okay, uh, Dr. Hope's, who has signed up to speak?
First, I, I appreciate Reverend Golden's motion, but we are now, that somehow, somehow this discussion has, you know, evolved into curriculum. The problem I have with eighteen is, in the state of Florida, you can preregister to vote before you're eighteen. So if we're gonna talk about government and what we teach and teach responsibility, civic responsibility, I agree with you a hundred percent. But can we please have a workshop to discuss this? Because to make a motion that says when you're eighteen, when we already know you could preregister to vote before you turn eighteen, you can do it at the DMV, I mean, there are all kinds of things. I, I'm asking my colleagues, look, we got a motion up here. It doesn't sound like we're gonna approve any language. It was withdrawn. No, we went from language to something else into a motion, and now we're talking about mandating that when someone turns eighteen, we want them to register to vote. I would like to move this meeting forward. It doesn't seem like we're gonna get anywhere with regards to a statement from the board. We were gonna prohibit something that we don't even teach. Now we're, you know, stumbling into government curriculum. I'd like to have government teachers here. I'd like to drill into what we are teaching in our government courses. But to put certain ages on things when that limits the opportunity, because in Florida, as I said, you can preregister to vote, so when you turn eighteen, you're already registered. You don't have to wait till you're eighteen. You can do it when you're seventeen, if I'm not mistaken. So I appreciate the motion, Reverend Golden, but I'll tell you what, we are devolving into making policy decisions about curriculum, and we, we have a near-empty house here. We don't even have the deputy superintendent of curriculum here. So I would really like to move off of this. Let's go to superintendent's comments or whatever. I'm not feeling that this is productive. I think we're making a bunch of statements for whoever is out there watching what's going on, and we're diving into areas that are not our expertise, and the experts aren't here, not that the superintendent's not an expert, but I'm asking, can we just move on? Otherwise, I'd have to amend your motion. Okay, well then, I, then.
Vote against it, then.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the list of people that have signed up to speak. Uh, Vice Chair Kennedy.
The, I, I'm fine with the motion, 'cause like I said, this board is demonstrating that we are willing to take action in this moment. Guys, the, the disrespect on this dais is just unbelievable. Like, these like open
Okay, let's just.
displays. It's just, it's so disrespectful. Like, okay, so I totally support this motion because, like you just said, we have a superintendent who is an expert, we have staff. This is a very simple motion of the board to implement. I have taught government for years. It's really simple to do. The board, I think rightfully so, should demonstrate some leadership in this moment to this community in whatever way we can. Um, I'll have something I'll share during my board comments, um, related to, but after this motion, I've got another one, so get ready for another one. And you can vote no on that one, too. You don't need to pontificate and get on your soapbox. This is not for anyone on TV, 'cause newsflash, nobody is watching this. No one cares. There's maybe fifteen people watching this meeting. So this is from the things that I was feeling over the weekend when, when I began to sit down and write and think about these things and, and, and the board's place in this. And I think this is important. This is a really important conversation. I'm sorry, it's seven forty-five and people wanna go home. But like, this is important work to kids of color in this district who are at fear for their life at this moment because of things that are experienced in their neighborhoods and things they are seeing on TV. This could not be more important. So after this motion, I'll be back with another one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I think everyone's gone around a lot, and I wanna just share a few different things, 'cause I haven't really said very much. If the district wants to put out a statement, I support the district putting out a statement. If the district wants to put out draft two as it is, I support that. If the district wants to put out draft one as it is, I support that. Um, either one of those, although I leaned more towards lea- draft two, because I think it is shorter and gets to the point. Um, I would support, um, as it's written, or I would support number one as it's written, if you need that guidance, if you feel like you'd like to do that. I don't think we need to vote on that. I do think that if you feel comfortable doing one of those, I support you. Okay? Uh, I do wholeheartedly agree with Reverend Golden that there is a whole lot more than just words that need to happen, and I do wholeheartedly agree that actions need to happen. But the actions that this board takes are policy decisions. Some of the suggestions you made are policy decisions. So what I'm gonna ask from you is that there are certain policy decisions. You suggested policies about violent acts and, uh, restraints and those types of things. What I'd like is, if those are things that you'd like to enact, write the policy or look at our policy and see how you could tweak it and bring it to us, because those are the decisions that I think we, as a board, really take action on. Those are true policy decisions that we have in place. I would support, uh, looking at those. I know there's gonna be discussion about our bylaws. We're gonna have to re-update our policies anyways. If there are things that you think in our policies, because that sets the playbook for the district. That sets the tone. The strategic plan and the policies set the tone for the district. So I, I really wanna encourage that we focus on those things that we really truly manipulate and use to set the tone and the, the, the changes that you'd like to see happen. Um, when it comes down to this specific one about government classes, I love the idea of making sure that that's included. I don't think that this motion encompasses what I believe is the best way to make this happen. I don't think changing the curriculum is what we really need to do. I think changing the student progression plan is different than changing the curriculum. Somebody in education would see how those two things are different. Changing a curriculum, that is something that's radically different than changing a progression plan. So I would, I'm comfortable adding that language in and, and, and wordsmithing it, however, to make sure that that is clear in our student progression plan, that this is something we would like to achieve. Have a third-party voter registration person come in and ensure that that is part of whatever class we wanna add it to, the government class or whatever. But I do not see the point in changing, in calling it a change in curriculum, because it's not a change in curriculum. That is, this is not a, that is not a curri- a curriculum change. The curriculum is set by the, the state based on the standards. So that, that is not what is being asked of us, and I don't wanna confuse those two things. So to me, I think if that's something that the board would like to achieve, which I think is a noble idea, and I think it's a good idea, and I agree that we should be focusing on actions, um, which is why I liked, um, draft number one, is because it did have specific actions. Some of those, we actually took tonight, by the way, guys. Social emotional learning, that was something we voted on tonight, uh, to fund better. So some of those things are things that we are doing tonight, real action tonight. The district is taking it. We have supported it. It is happening. It has already happened. We have already approved it. And so, um, and the next one is, uh, reduce suspensions. That's another action, real life, real thing that we are doing. We are going to vote on that in July. So those are real actions. Those are real things that we can take and, and use. Um, and so I, I would really focus on the, the things that we do manipulate, those things that we can write and focus on that. That is my only request. Um, but for the motion that's on the table to change a curriculum, I will be voting no, because I think there are appropriate ways to handle this, and I don't think this is the right way. And I would think that, and the other things that are mentioned that are policy changes, I think that we can address those, and I a hundred percent support addressing those and having that conversation to ensure that that is very clear. Um, when I was a teacher, there were times where there were, there was training that I had to go to on how, 'cause I taught, um, an inclusion class. One of my students was EBD, which is emotionally behaviorally disturbed. He was a very violent student. He threw things. He threw computers. He, 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 he was a kindergartner that threw computers. Yes, I'm not exaggerating. Um, and, and, and part of the training was learning how to safely keep, hold him or the other stu- and keeps the other students safe. That was part of the training. So there are trainings that are happening that I'm not sure this board is even aware that exists, that I'm sure the school district knows about and probably takes part in. Uh, our ERC teachers that teach EBD and autistic children, I bet they know him and have had to get those trainings and had to be certified. Um, so I, I, maybe we need to have those conversations to make sure that those things are being covered, and what's the safety? There's a lot of safety that goes into that, and witnesses that have to be there, and a lot of other things that have to happen for that to happen. Um, so maybe those are the conversations that we need to have, and I agree with that. I just wanna make sure that we're moving forward in a productive way. And I'm not sure that doing this motion by motion is going to be the most productive way, because I don't think that that is going to create the changes that you really want, and I think it's gonna create, um, dissonance. I, I don't want that, you know? Um, Mr. Minor.
I, I think everything you said is very valuable, and I endorse that. I understood that, uh, Reverend Golden had withdrawn his motion.
He, he brought forward a new one.
Okay, I apologize, you know, um, for not remembering the new one. Now, can you educate me further? Has a new one been seconded?
The new one that has been seconded by Vice Chair Kennedy was to include in the governors, or the government course, to include in the curriculum that when a child arrives at the eighteen years of age, they would be um, allowed to register to vote in the class.
Okay, that was part of the second.
That was the sec- that was seconded.
Okay, yeah. So let's lay it long. Um, I, I'd like to call the question. And, uh, you know, I, I, it, it's kind of a little uncharted. We have a second that really doesn't by itself, um, endorse the first. Uh, I guess is, it, it, okay.
You seconded that motion. The motion I just talked to you, Vice Chair-
The motion I just referred to, Vice Chair Kennedy seconded it, and you have called a question, which ends discussion, and we're gonna vote to call the question. Is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, I think so. I guess that.
Okay, that has to be a supermajority vote. So all those in favor of calling to question, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Did you say aye?
Did you say aye?
Yeah.
All right, then it passes. So we're going to call the question. The motion on the table is to include in the government class curriculum that when a child or a student arrives at eighteen years of age, they will be registered or allowed to register to vote while in the class. Am I stating that motion correctly? Reverend Golden, I want to make sure I'm stating your motion correctly.
You're stating the words correctly, but not the intent. And you've cut off the discussion, so I.
I have not cut off the discussion. Someone called a question, and that is how it works.
The supermajority of the board did.
All right. Then there's nothing left to be said.
Okay. Okay, so that is the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Okay.
No, it's no on your screen, your computer screen.
I, I'm having problems with this. Could I make a motion now, your?
I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Kennedy just asked to make a motion, so.
Well, I was doing that a couple minutes ago, trying to, but I was told.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to move that, you know, this board endorsed, as a statement, draft number two with the, just the small changes, you know, that I had suggested and what we had discussed, and I did not hear any objection to, as a position of the district. If that's gonna die for lack of a second, then it's gonna die.
I don't hear a second.
Okay, so it died.
It dies for lack of a second.
May, for purposes of general discussion, may I say that I appreciate Reverend Golden's feeling of, you know, action sounds a lot better than taking a, you know, adopting some statement. I respectfully do not agree with that. I think what the chair said about this board is taking many actions is important. But, you know, throughout history, taking stands with statements has been a history-changing event by itself. And I'll be at, oh, four score and seven years ago, you know, was talking about the country going forward. That was just a statement. But it's a statement that has been a guide, you know, for this country for generations. What we have in our constitution, you know, talking about we, the people, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union. You know, that's a statement. That is an action by itself. It says we're going to, you know, take this, you know, have this constitution. But the, just the words in that statement have been powerful, you know, for hundreds of years. And so I, I just respectfully, you know, differ from those who say, you know, making a statement is kind of irrelevant. It is. And that's, that's why I made the motion for adopting some statement, which I think was what set off this discussion tonight. And I thank the chair for the opportunity to share my remarks.
I said that Vice Chair Kennedy was next.
Thanks. Gina, your words have kind of soaked in. So I'm not gonna make a motion, but I would like to bring up a workshop item, when we get to workshop item requests.
We're getting there.
I'll say it then. Thanks.
Well, there you go.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Yes.
Just as, as the chair had registered a comment, I just wanted to sort of codify my comments earlier with regards to the version that was amended or edited by Mr. Minor. I think Mr. Minor, in his motion, I think is sending the message to you that he's comfortable, should the district want to send that out. My preference is if the district is gonna send out a statement around this, that I'm comfortable with the district sending out the draft number two as edited by Mr. Minor. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think this conversation has only made your job harder.
She loves it.
I will do one and send it, so I, I got it.
Okay.
Based on all the feedback.
Okay. I am going to move forward then. We received a lot of public comments in our emails today, and I'm gonna move forward to our workshop item requests. I know, Mr. Kennedy, you just alluded to the fact that you had one.
I did. Can I address public comment for one second?
I think we had this conversation last time, that we were going to accept that we received them in our email.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't want to say, I'm not gonna rehash what I said last time.
Okay.
No, I just want to say that, like, we do have, we've got thirty-four on the list that came to the public comment email address. All of them are related to the agenda item that for the second meeting in a row couldn't get a second even for discussion, which I think in almost six years on the board, I've never seen it happen before. Now it's happened twice in a row. So that's a little disappointing that I can't even get a second to talk about it. But we can do that at the workshop.
This is, this is only talking about the public comment.
Okay, sorry, I digress. I'll wait till workshop request.
We're on to workshop item request.
Okay, great. I don't know if you guys are just messing with me now or what, but if we could please deal with this. We have a folder full of public comment. I don't know what is everyone's holdup on this. But can we please discuss and settle this on Thursday at the workshop? Also related to that workshop, I would like to.
I'm sorry, I need clarity. What do you mean by discuss and settle this? What is this?
The charter school funding issue that has now failed to get a second in two straight meetings.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand what this meant, if you were referring to public comment or if you were.
Well, that's what all the public comment is about, is that item that can't get a second.
Okay, I just, okay, I didn't understand what this meant. I'm genuinely, I have no idea.
No, I know, I know you're sincere. The other workshop item I'd like to request, and this was gonna be the nature of my motion, but I'll make it as a workshop item request instead, is that the board discussed with the superintendent, and is professional development requi-, the content of professional development, does that have to be approved by the MEA or just the number of professional development hours?
The content, if you're talking about in the workday or calendar, we have to have permission, but not the types, if the district's doing professional learning.
We can decide what it is.
We can set what the professional learning is.
Perfect.
Yes.
And I talked to Pat earlier today, not about this, what I'm gonna say now specifically, but I did talk to Pat today. So, you know, if Pat would want to come into this conversation, I think that would be great. But really, what I want to talk about is focused at all, at all employees. And another thing that came out of the diversity and inclusion meeting on Monday was the importance of implicit bias training. And what I was gonna do is make a motion for the board to direct the superintendent to provide a minimum number of hours of implicit bias training. But instead of that, doing that through a motion, I'm requesting, can we please talk about that on Thursday's workshop? And I have one more. And this, this has some urgency to it as well, but not Thursday urgency. I would, I would like to have a workshop about, about Horizons. Just, and there's, there's just a lot of buzz out there. We've heard about it in public comment before. You know, what, you know, what's going on on campus? What programs are there? What rights do kids have when they are sent to Horizons? Again, like vast issues that have come up. I just want to make sure everyone has the same information on what is happening at that school, how kids end up there, what the district, how the district treats those kids and families. Because I think there is some, you know, there's, there may be some misinformation. There's certainly some accusations flying around. And I would like the district to address that school campus and our policies around that school campus.
Okay.
Thanks.
Are there any other workshop requests?
Yes.
Dr. Hopes.
Madam Chair, and I know we have a lot of priorities, but I would like us to have a workshop around our self-insured health plan. I think especially, you know, Reverend Golden may not be fully aware. I think I'm less aware than I thought I was with regards to how it's governed, how much it costs, how we determine benefits. You and I have had conversations, because I've heard from people about what we do and do not cover, and I find it astounding that we don't cover things like labor epidurals. We, we have a situation where if we have two, a two-employee family, they cannot get a family plan where they only have one maximum out-of-pocket a year. One of them has to be on an individual plan with an individual copayment and an individual maximum out-of-pocket. The other spouse has the kids, and they're exposed to yet another maximum out-of-pocket. And I spoke with Pat Barber, she's, she is, first of all, she said it was our fault because we did that. And I said, I would not have knowingly done that, because I know something about insurance. But I would really, really like all of us to equally, fully understand the, the, the self-insured plan, how it's funded, how we arrive at the benefits, who's advising us, who's making the decisions. I've got some serious concerns, you know, on the surface. It looks like we're doing a great job economically with it. But I really think, given the percent of our employee benefits that are consumed by our self-insured health plan, I really think we should all equitably understand what's in that big black box. And I, I kind of, when I got on the board, you know, I sort of held off on it because it wasn't, you know, a critical issue. But now I'm getting ready to go into my fourth year, and I really would like us to better understand this critical employee benefit. You know, as I said, and this is probably like an almost all-day or at least a half-a-day workshop. So I understand we've got a whole lot of priorities. But I think it's important, I think it's important to our employees, too, because there are some policies, I don't know where they come from, and it's just not fair to our employees. And I would like us to look at how these decisions are being made, because if they're not being made in the best interest of the employees, I would like us to change the way these things are done. Thank you. That's my request.
Having had to pay for my epidural out-of-pocket, I concur that we should have a workshop on that.
On Thursday.
Reverend Golden.
I know that the superintendent is in the midst of developing a plan for us to deal with the reopening of schools. And we've got two, three options. I'm just gonna call them A, B, and C, but they involve various degrees of, varying degrees of children coming back to school. I remember when I first got on the board, one of the seminal issues here was what we were gonna name the school north of, north of the river.
We named it Northbrook.
No, we didn't.
We did, we did.
Oh, yeah.
We got to wait a hundred and eighty days.
But we changed.
Okay, let's not rehash the past.
Okay. But, you know, I'm just wondering if there's an appetite to take, even though we have the coronavirus and all of these other things, to take something of this magnitude back to a larger arena to allow for more participation. I just, I just, I just think it's, there are too many variances, too many vagaries, too much is lost in translation. And I think it's very, very important that we do this as well as we can do it rightly. And hopefully, we can do it at the convention center and get enough distance between enough people so that you can get many more people than you would ever get. I don't think there's any other forum as large as that. But that, I think, is very, very important. I think the survey has already gone out, and we started compiling the results back. And so I'd just like for us to weigh in at a workshop. We don't necessarily have to vote at that workshop. But I think that we ought to hear with one voice and one ear what is being proposed and why it's being proposed. And then we can deliver it as the one that we think that we, is more acceptable for us in this county and why. So I'd like to have that workshop as soon as we can get it done with respect to the public input.
So we have a workshop planned to discuss the reopening of school. That has already been planned. I think you should have got a calendar invite, but I'm not a hundred percent positive when that went out. It is planned for June twenty-fifth at 2:00 P.M.
Okay.
I do not know at that time whether we will be open to the public or not. I think that's something the superintendent was hoping to discuss with us, perhaps on Thursday? Is that my understanding or tonight?
Put it in my, it's in my board comments.
Okay. But that's something that maybe we should discuss on Thursday.
Yes.
If, if there are concerns. I really like your idea of opening it up if we can. I don't know if we will be able to or not, but I really like that idea because there's a lot of parents that are very concerned. So I think that's a good idea if we can do it. The other workshops that are on the books right now is, we do have one on Thursday. It is about millage allocations. We might also add the reopening and something about bylaws? Is that gonna be part of that one, two, or not? I don't remember now. And then also, on the eighteenth, we have a workshop planned. And that workshop is going to be the five-year capital plan. It's also gonna be the construction contract. And, I can't read the rest of that note. Oh, and schematic design energy model. That's what I have in there, is my notes. So we have a few workshops already on the books. I hear Mr. Kennedy saying that he would like to add this professional development. I'm not sure, is the district, would the district be even really prepared to discuss that on Thursday? Or is that something that we could perhaps add to the one on the eighteenth? Or do we need to set a different one? I know the eighteenth is gonna be construction stuff and capital plans. That might really take the whole time. I don't, I don't, or we make the one on Thursday a little longer, but I don't know if the district's even prepared. He asked for it on Thursday, but I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure what he was looking for. If he's looking for a discussion so the board could kind of discuss the type of professional learning that we should be seeing, you know, part of our diversity and inclusion committee, part of our strategic plan. We did have that component of expectation for next year. So if you're looking for setting the tone from the board of what you feel that we should be doing, we could have that discussion on Thursday. If you want the district to do a presentation, that's probably not gonna give me enough time to get that together.
Yeah, so I just want to know, maybe what you're looking for in that.
I was not seeking a staff presentation. What I wanted to gauge is, in the spirit of taking action to address this current moment, does the board have any appetite to direct the superintendent to make sure every employee has a minimum of four hours of implicit bias training during this upcoming school year?
Okay, so.
So we can.
It's really, it's really a conversation for the board.
Right, we can add that Thursday then, that'll be fine.
Okay, so Thursday might be a whopper of a day. I'm just warning y'all then, because there's a lot of topics that we really need to discuss. And it starts at ten, and right now it's booked for two hours. But in reality, I think each one of these topics, given how we all like to talk, could last a lot longer than those two hours. Is everybody okay with that and understanding of that? I mean, I think there are things that need to be addressed. We're talking about the millage allocations. We're talking about reopening plans, perhaps. We're talking about this training, perhaps. There might be things about bylaws, I think. So there were a few different things that were kind of in that.
But the twenty-fifth, we're having a big conversation about the reopening.
Of schools, I mean reopening of, of our meetings.
Oh, of the board, right. Of, right, of facilities and so forth. Okay, yeah.
This is just the meetings, which is what, and the building.
Right.
So. So, um, Mr. Minor.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that at the end of the month, uh, we'll be able to have as many as 50 people. Uh, I think that's a change in these, uh, you know, state policies coming about. I, you, uh, a moment ago, you mentioned about the bylaws. Uh, I think that's, uh, not real complicated, but very, very important to, uh, update our, our policies and bylaws with respect to, uh, public participation and get that, um, you know, sort of decided and, and then set for a policy, um, you know, hearing sometime shortly after. Uh, it's, it's just kind of niceening up, uh, our, our policies in that regard and, uh, before we, uh, start really rocking and rolling, you know, for, uh, public comment.
Okay, and I understand that. And I think, um, to ensure that that happens in a timely manner, there would be a lot of topics that are gonna be on the 11th, on Thursday's workshop. Is everyone okay with that? I just wanna make sure everybody's okay tack. There's a lot of things to tackle. You know, we really didn't have workshops when this whole thing hit because we were kind of all hands on deck dealing with what we had to deal with. Now I think, you know, we, we're kind of taking some big bites out of the things that we really do need to have some thorough conversations on. And, um, so that means that it might be longer. Is that, I, I don't know how long we booked the room for. I don't know, I mean, is this, I guess this is the room. I don't know, who else is gonna use this other than Florida High School Athletic Association?
Wedding coming in after us?
No, the Florida Ath- Athletic, uh, High School Athletic Association uses it, but, I mean, they don't, and, you know, as long as we're not, um, disrupting anybody's time, I mean, I just want people to be prepared. There are a lot of topics that we might have to cover. Are you gonna throw another one out there?
Well, it's not a wedding, but I have a funeral I have to go to on Friday in Panama City. Friday morning, actually outside of Panama City, like Bonifay. So it's like almost eight hours away and I don't have an airplane. So, um, I mean, I can, as it was scheduled, I mean, I can do the mourning, but I, 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 you know, and it would not be fair to tie in by phone. I'm just saying that an all-day thing on Thursday would make it very difficult for me to attend a funeral that I really need to attend.
Could we start it earlier?
I can start earlier.
Earlier than 10:00?
Yes, sir. I have two little children. I've, that's.
I, I, I'm happy to come at 6:00, but I got an eight-hour drive ahead of me.
But I don't know for availability.
What y'all talking about? 10 o'clock is early in the morning for me.
Is, is 9:00 possible?
Yeah, 9:00 is fine. Uh, uh, we could, we could do that. But while we're still on the subject of workshops,
Yeah.
I don't wanna overlook the fact that the one on the 25th is not scheduled to start until 2:00. And it's only set for two hours.
Yes.
Could you give some consideration to letting it start at 6:00, number one, to get more people and be over by 9:00? That's, 'cause that's just one subject and you really wanna hear from everybody about.
6:00 in the morning, you said?
No, no, 6:00, 6:00 in the evening.
Oh.
Yeah, 6:00 in the evening. So that everybody will have an opportunity to come and say what they wanna say in terms of what they think about the reopening of our schools. I, I think that this is going to be a significant issue in September and October of this year. I really do. Because people are going to feel marginalized and overlooked and that you did this in spite of me and you weren't considering me. At the very least, we can, we did this for one high school. I know we can do it for the opening of all of the schools.
I would agree with that statement, except for now we're dealing with this virus and I don't know if we're gonna have the buildings open or not. So can we wait until the Thursday conversation, when we talk about reopening the buildings, to decide kind of, and hear from the superintendent what the plans are and then decide what to do with that workshop?
Okay, so then what, I'm, I'm not wanting to be adversarial here, but what you run the risk of is, we decided on Thursday and all of the rest of it doesn't really mean anything. Because if we listen to the superintendent and make a decision about what we think on Thursday, we go into any discussion about reopening of the schools with what this public will perceive as we've already made up in our minds. And I, and even, I, I'm not adverse to having a discussion about the options. I'm just wanting to make sure that before we make a final decision, that we hear from the people. There are people who answered the survey and we'll have that. There are people who work in the system, we'll have that. But in the final analysis, we're talking 50,000 kids here. I can only think of one forum and, and, and let the people decide. I'm not gonna go with that 'cause whatever they're gonna do is, alright, I don't wanna get coronavirus. Or this is important enough for me to try to get there. And let them decide. We'll only let in the first 500 people or we'll on, and you have to maintain the social distancing. We just need to provide the people an opportunity to be heard. That's all.
I appreciate that. I think that's why the superintendent has put out that survey and I, she's heard from thousands upon thousands upon thousands of people. And I think already the feedback I've gotten is pretty darn clear about what they all want. It's.
Florida, I've got, that's part of my comments tonight.
It's a whole lotta.
A lot of A's.
Um, nevertheless, on Thursday, we're gonna talk about not the schools opening, but this building to the public for board meetings.
Okay.
So why don't we have that conversation then? And if we find that we would like to make sure the public can be present in the room, then maybe we need to relocate the date of that or we find a way to make that work or whatever we need to do. But let's have that conversation on Thursday when we talk about opening up to the public.
That's right.
That, I think, goes with it.
And one last thing.
Okay.
Okay. In our consent agenda, let me take this off. You see, you hear better when you, okay. In our consent agenda today, under miscellaneous consent, under items, uh, item 54 and 55, there was approval of advertising a notice of intent to amend the student progression policy and setting a public hearing on the proposed amendment at the board meeting scheduled for July 28th, 2020. That was in the consent agenda today. Is that correct?
Forty-two days.
Okay. And likewise, number 55, amend, well, I'm sorry, what did I say? 54 is to amend the code of student conduct and 55 is to amend the student progression policy on July the 28th, 2020. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for making sure that we all know that that is the day that we're going to make the, 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 publish, uh, the notice to amend. When will the hearing be? Can we say that now?
The 28th.
No, no.
That's what the notice said.
It's published tomorrow.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay. So, so the publication.
Will be on the 28th.
28th, okay, so it's published tomorrow.
Yes.
And will be on the 28th.
Yes, we wanna make sure that that meeting is open to the public and that people can attend. So that's why we are doing it on that day. It's before the school year starts, but we will, we are working to ensure that our meetings are open to the public by that point at least.
That's great. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate, um, the work that you and the superintendent put into trying to make sure that these two important issues are addressed timely and, and thoroughly to deal with the, uh, the, the concerns that parents would have for these two issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've talked about workshop items requests. That was a good one. Um, let's move on to legal update. Got so many lawyers in the room.
Nothing to report.
All right. Um, instructional update is Ms. Yost, uh, with, okay. Uh, operations update. Mr. Wagner, come on down.
Absolutely, I have four items. Appreciate it. So item number one, I just wanna make sure everyone knows that we're, there are, there is free testing for coronavirus. Uh, we're gonna send out an email this week from Roh Mohamad, our coordinator of Well U. Uh, some things to note. So employees on the, the Florida Blue Health Plan, the school district is offered to cover 100% of the member cost to share the cost of the coronavirus. This means that any testing deemed necessary by in-network provider, there's no cost to the employee with a doctor's referral, Quest Diagnostics, and also the Center for Urgent Care on State Road 70 offers swab testing as well as the antibody test. In addition, there's free testing. No appointment necessary at these four sites in Manatee County. Home Depot on Cortez, UTC Mall, Lincoln Park, and also Robert Taylor Community Complex. All those are from 9:00 to 5:00 with the exception of Lincoln, which is 9:00 to 6:00. And then free testing appointment needed, which is one blood testing at all blood donation centers and also Suncoast Blood Centers offers it as well. So that's the first thing and that's important and it's interesting how this has come about. If you think back when this first started, it was hundreds of dollars to have the test. And now it's, uh, readily available and no cost. Number two, uh, the ID badge, uh, project, which you approved a few months ago, is on track. It's gonna start, uh, July 1st. We're having, uh, ID badge makers at every school for student IDs and for employees. Uh, and it'll be nice that now we can track, uh, it'll work for their, their food, for bus transportation, for library. Employees can scan in and out of schools and focus tardy kiosks as well. So it's a large undertaking. I wanna make sure you know it is on track. Number three, register to ride. So this is the first time in Manatee County, uh, that we've ever had this. And what we're asking is, we're asking all parents to register their children to ride the bus. So by June 30th, uh, online, last week, we opened it up and we had about a third of the students who currently ride, uh, our buses, register already. So that's a big deal just after one week. Uh, it's at manateeschools.net. There's a top link at the top and you just click it. Takes about two minutes to fill out the information and that way you'll be registered to ride. If you don't have internet, we have also set up a call center at 782-1BUS. That's 782 and the other part of that is 1287. Uh, so anybody can call that number and during the day, we will take that information and make sure that their students are registered to ride as well. Uh, we're trying to be more efficient and more responsive. Number four, uh, starting July, we're moving to a 26 versus 24 paychecks. So employees will be receiving, uh, their paychecks every other Friday, starting July 1st. Teachers, of course, have an option for the 22 pays or the 26 or the 26 with a lump sum for the summer. Everyone else has, gonna be on a 26 pay. So it's gonna make this process easier for employees and it's just an example of us trying to be more responsive to support our school system. So those are a few examples. I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Before.
Dr. Hope.
Okay. You mentioned antibody testing at the urgent care center and that we will be paying for it. Are they doing it for us for free?
Pardon me?
Will we be paying for it or are they doing it for us for free?
Nope, if you're a member of the plan, of our Blue Cross plan, uh, and you have a, with a doctor's referral, Quest Diagnostics and the Center for Urgent Care on State Road 70.
The Center for Urgent Care, are they getting paid by anybody for the test? They're just doing it for free? Or is it coming out of the health plan?
Well, I'm just talking about our cost, our out-of-pocket cost.
Okay, so here, look, unless something happened today that I'm unaware of, there is not an antibody test that is approved at the point of care. It can only be done in a, most of them are only approved for laboratories of high complexity, which would be like Quest or LabCorp. There are a few that are approved by the FDA for laboratories of moderate complexity with CLIA certification. There are certain doctors' offices and urgent care centers that are acquiring a rapid antibody test. It is not authorized and it is not approved for that use. So I hope we're not paying for it through the health plan because we should not because it's not approved for that use. The reason why it's not approved for that use is the results that are done in these urgent care centers and I, and I, I think I'm familiar with the physician's office because I brought it up to the Medical Society. So before our health plan pays for any kind of testing, it needs to be done in a legally authorized setting, which unless something happened today that I'm not aware of, because I'm with the FDA like every day on it, it, that, that can't be done. There are other laboratories, there's one laboratory in town that has the license, the CLIA certification, to do an antibody test. But that would mean the urgent care center has to draw the blood and send it to the laboratory. The urgent care center is not authorized to do a test and give out results because they don't have the, the laboratory license, the CLIA license.
So let's do this.
So I'm happy to talk with you about it tomorrow, but I just wanna make it known because now we're telling all of our employees that they can go do something like that. And the last thing I want is our employees getting a test done and getting a result, a negative result or a positive result, but it's being done in an environment that is not authorized nor licensed to do that test.
All right, what you're saying, the Quest diagnostic would.
Quest is.
Okay.
Quest is.
So before we send this out, we'll make sure the Quest diagnostic is, of course, and we'll double-check with the Center for Urgent Care to make sure that that is and we'll.
If it is a, if it is an antibody test and they're doing it on-site and not sending it to a laboratory, it's not authorized.
But swab, offer swab testing.
Now, they do a swab, they do a nasal swab. They're not doing the test there, they're sending it out.
Okay, well, that's what it says, so it offers a swab testing.
But the antibody test is a whole different thing. Antibody test is a blood test, but it's not a swab.
All right, very good.
Just, just so we know, 'cause I don't want us to.
No, we'll definitely check.
Get in any trouble.
Before it goes out and we'll make sure if it's on there, then it's, then we would have checked it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since we're getting a graduate education in testing here, um, could we get some clarification? Uh, I, I've been up the nose and through the brain, you know, testing.
It feels like it does.
Yeah. Uh, and, you know, the, the negatives, you know, come back, but, um, that, this was, uh, from going over to the convention center and then, uh, you know, two or three weeks later, I find out it was negative. But it was just about that period of time too. But if I'm understanding from the conversation that just occurred with Dr. Hope's, uh, is that Quest, uh, diagnostics is licensed and authorized to do, uh, all the tests and they have, you know, several, um, offices around town. And so I, I guess, uh, what, if someone wants to have a test, uh, what, what do they need to do to walk into Quest and, uh, you know, get one of these paid-for, authorized, licensed, um, I guess, antibody tests, which is the blood test, okay? I, I don't know that much about it. What, what do they, do they have to have a referral from a doctor? Is that?
They do.
Written order.
They have to, you have to have a script from the doctor.
Okay. When we started out with this testing, that's what they said even for the, uh, up the nose. But now, uh, it's just if you're having a blood test. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Well, I did wanna talk about our survey. Uh, we launched it, it's, uh, been about a week and it closes next Sunday. But thus far, we have over 13,000 responses, of which, uh, 11,400 identified themselves as either a parent or a guardian. Uh, about 60% did want Plan A. However, when I have spoken to other community groups, they cautioned about A and felt more comfortable with B. So what I really need to know is who's responding to the survey. So I'm now asking each school to contact their parent community so I can ensure I'm getting a voice of everyone so that my district data that's coming in, we understand what it's comprised of and who's answering what question. Now again, we've not set any parameter or, or stated how we're gonna look in the fall because we do not know. We're trying to get input from a variety of individuals, all the stakeholders, so that the board cook, a, as a whole, can make a decision based on all the information and fact, based on the guidelines that the state gives us, that the CDC gives us, and information that the parents and the school community are giving us. So I, I do know this is not going to be easy because we're hearing a lot of information from a lot of people. We know that, uh, many need to go to work, they have young children. It's impacting them, uh, in terms of, of that particular situation. But I've also heard from many that are concerned about, uh, their safety, their health. Uh, what else is interesting is that we had 1,800. What else is interesting is that we had 1,800 so far say that they wanted to continue full-time with e-learning.
Really?
Yeah. And I thought that was a, a pretty interesting statement as well. So we also had over 7,400 written responses because we did want their feedback of what their experience was this past spring, what we could do better, and some input about what they needed to see moving forward in the fall. So we really do want to hear their opinion so that we, I can present all the facts to the board and we can make the best decision with all the information possible. I, I am hopeful that sometime, early July hopeful, this, that we will have a position from the state. But really my goal, after we have a workshop on the 25th, by the first part of July, I do think we need to tell parents, based on all the information we have thus far, we really do need to have a decision so they can be prepared and know what to expect. Again, it's going to be a moving target. I think we've got to be prepared that if we need to close down to clean buildings for, if there's an outbreak, we've got to be prepared and we've got to be flexible. But I do think the overall expectation is we need to have our students back in the building next year in some capacity. Whether we can get every one of them in at one time or not, we need to do our very best with making sure that not only our students are safe, but our teachers and employees are safe. We do have another voice that we have to keep into consideration and that is our employees as well, our bus drivers, our paras, our teachers. So we have a lot of voices that we need to listen to and then we're just going to have to make the very best decision we can with all the data provided. And I feel comfortable that we will be able to do that. And so I think the 25th, the survey ends on the 14th. We will easily be able to come and share all, all the information collected. And I'm hoping to also have it broken down, like I said, by school community as well. I do know the elementary parents, it really is a hardship. So we are trying our very best to make a schedule, at least to see how many of those I could have 100% on campus following the guidelines. They do have a lot of support personnel, far more than secondary with paras and, and so forth. So it may be a little bit easier to accomplish that in elementary. The schools are very, working very hard to come up with those plans right now. So I think by the workshop, we will have a lot of information available to you. In addition, we've been going over the survey link with our Strategic Planning Task Force, with our Diversity and Inclusion Committee, as well as our Pastor Community Group. So we really are trying to get the message out, to ensure people are aware of the survey, the link. Part of our Strategic Planning Group, we have Sharon Hilstrom with the Economic Development Council. She's going to push it out to all of her business community. We're asking Jackie to push it out with the Chamber. We really do want to have the community involved knowing what's going on. So we, we do have a, a, a big effort making sure that everybody is aware and has a voice. In addition, we've kind of already spoke about it. The Governor's Order lasts through June 30th in terms of how our government meetings can or should be conducted. I do think Thursday, we should have a conversation of how you feel they should be going on moving forward. So I think it's already been mentioned, so we will have that discussion Thursday at the workshop. Other than that, I appreciate the opportunity, your input on my evaluation. I do take it very seriously. I, I do think there's always room to improve. And I also think that maybe in July, we can look at the existing template and if there's any feedback of changes of the template, we can go ahead and make those changes, put that in place for the next year. And then I certainly will work on areas of the feedback that we can improve the district, improve my leadership skills as well, so that we can have the very best year possible next year, even though I think we can all agree it's going to be not a traditional school year at best. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Board.
I'd like to ask the Superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry, Reverend Golden.
That's all right. I'd like to ask.
I apologize.
There can be no doubt that these are times that we've never seen before, anywhere like this. If we were required to simplify the challenge that we face as a school district, would it be helpful to simply say, all we are trying to do now is to manage instability? It is unrealistic to expect us to come up with a stable plan that is going to accommodate the times that we're going through. These are unstable times. And I, I, I'm just trying to figure out how, how, how can we share that with the people without panicking them, but becoming more realistic, quite honestly, that none of us are going to be satisfied? Not the employees, not the parents, not the children? Because all of us are involved in this instability. Jobs are at stake, people who work for the system, multi-generational families. These are, why don't we just acknowledge that and ask for help and for understanding and for patience from the people that we're trying to serve? We've already attested to the fact that you're as good as field general as we'll have taking us through this. Don't have a problem with that. But I'm tired of us trying to, to, to reach some, some impossible status because of circumstances that are beyond us. We'll meet Thursday, but we have to meet after we hear from the Governor. Well, we're, we're going to try to decide what we're going to do in July, but we're going to have to wait until the CDC. And, and that's the way it's going to be. We, that is, that is what's happening to us. So why, why should we put ourselves in the, in, in the business of trying to appease everybody when the best thing we could do is to manage the instability that, that we're all, that we're all caught up in? We just can't get around it. And the quicker we acknowledge that, I, I think, I've been getting the letters. All, these children need to go back to school and these, and then you tell me 1,800 people have already said, no, let's all of them stay. This e-learning is great. Well, you can't do both. And so you might as well come to a conclusion.
We will. Yeah, I think you can.
Say again?
I, I, we, I, we will provide those parents that feel comfortable to do full-time. We will dedicate some teachers, I will work with the union, and we will provide that option for parents. So it, it is helpful to get feedback. We will not be able to please 100% of the masses. You, you are correct. But I do think the feedback and options are helpful for us to try to do the very best we can to make the children and the parents feel comfortable as well as the employees and comply with the rules that we're expected to follow. But I do think we will have enough information, in my opinion, to make a decision and we can hold with that decision unless circumstances occur beyond our control that we have to alter our plan. And, and we're going to have to keep that in the back of our mind, that we're going to have to be very flexible.
Like a spike?
Absolutely. There could be a spike, I could have an outbreak at a school that I have to shut down for a number of days. And I think, as clearly stated tonight, the only thing that's going to help us survive is communication. And a lot of communication, talking to a lot of people so they understand that we can't just say, everybody goes back and we're back to how it was prior. And the only way that we are going to be able to help the community move forward is, is communication and them understanding what we're facing and, and how we're having to make our decisions. But I can provide some different options for families. And, and without that feedback, I would have never thought that we would have had 1,800 students today that would have preferred full-time e-learning. But luckily, we've got the platform and I have teachers that are going to be willing to do that. We are going to improve our instruction. We are going to have some adjustments made. We will improve what we did this past quarter. And we're working hand-in-hand with the union to make sure. And with teachers' input and principals' input, I think we will be able to deliver a, a really robust education in the fall.
Thank you. We'll move on to Board comments. Reverend Golden, your first up.
Wow. Last year, when we were at this stage in our budgeting, I asked for increased funding for early childhood learning, reading, and I think that there was an increase that came. This year, I'm going to ask that we increase our funding for our diversity efforts, for Black History Month, Hispanic, was it Cinco de Mayo, that, that celebration? Holocaust education, what did, what did you call it? Sensitive?
Implicit bias training.
Implicit bias training specifically and particularly for the LGBTQ communities. And I'd like a specific amount to be brought back to us that, that is set aside for these purposes in our, in our budget. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Minor?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. We've been here today for a long time. We've done a lot, a lot of things. This is civil order. I've made reference to it before. In a civil way, even though we've disagreed about things, we have moved and made decisions, you know, to provide the, the greatest way of addressing social injustice. And we just heard from Reverend Golden about some, maybe some ways of adjusting that emphasis. And I think that, you know, helping to spread the gospel, in a sense, within the community, that there is no way of addressing social injustice without there being underlying civil order. And we've demonstrated that today. And our, our community, I think, appreciates that. We may disagree, we may argue, but we go about that. We're proud to be part of that. And I, I'm very proud of all of us in this room. I, I'm very proud that despite so many factors going on in our society, that we maintain a sense of going forward. And I thank everybody for being with me and helping to achieve that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Hope's?
Thank you. It has been a long and productive day. I'm happy to be back in person with everybody. But I really, you know, ask people to not let your guard down with regards to testing. One of the medical centers, Texas Medical Center in Houston, has been working with us on doing our US validations and they saw a 40% increase in COVID-19 hospitalizations in the past few days. As you know, Texas was one of the states that, that reopened early and strong. And you're going to find that it resulted in an enormous increase in the number of cases and it has nothing to do with testing more people. They're ending up in the hospital sick. So, you know, let's all pay close attention. Reverend Golden's right with regards to how and when we open up schools and how and when we open up board meetings. You know, there, there are a number of agencies that have the data and are weighing in. I think it's encouraging that in the surveys, we had so many people that decided that e-learning was working for them. And that's a testament to really the work that the district's done, the resources that the board has authorized to be able to, to equip and, and be at the forefront. And we will, you know, we'll get through this together. We'll get through this in a civil way. And, you know, I look forward to our, our continued conversations, our frequent meetings. And, and, and really for those of you that, that, that want to, to make comments, even in the days when you came in person, you had three minutes. And that required you to get all your thoughts together and get everything out. You know, we're here, we, we work for you, the public, and we like your, your input. And so if you can, you know, put it in a voicemail or, or put it in an email, we, we want to hear for you, from you. And you can provide a lot more information to us in an email than you can three minutes, you know, at the podium. So don't let, don't let the fact that we're, we're not able to yet take public in our meetings to deter you from communicating with your school district and, and, and with your elected officials. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nice meeting. Good to see everybody together in person.
Starting in a while.
Vice Chair Kennedy.
Thank you. I was looking through my notes in my, in my email and I had four items in there and they've all been covered in this meeting. So I'm, I'm going to be shorter than I thought, which is good. First, it has been addressed about the return to school and planning for return to school. As I try to tell everybody I speak to about it, and I'm sure you all do the same, it's just, please be patient, please be flexible, be open-minded. The same thing is on every, all of our minds, parents, school, district, employees. But we all want the same thing is that, that is to provide options to families so that they are best, that they're best served. I also want to mention on tonight's boardwork, HR boardwork, Dave Zeller from our IT department is retiring after 30, 30-something years. And Mr. Trin, oh, Mr. Trinsey over at Manatee High, he was across the hall from me. He also just retired after 30-something years. So there's, there were other, there, there is a long list of, you know, 25-plus-year employees who are on this week's HR document. Those two I know personally, so I wanted to honor them in this, at this board meeting. And then finally, I just want to share something I, I saw online. Like probably many of you, I've been with, with this past weeks or two weeks events, I've just been consuming news at a furious rate. And I just wanted to share something that really kind of touched on for me. And, and I'll, I'll, this is quick and I will end with this. But when the Boston Marathon was bombed, everybody's response was Boston Strong. Nobody responded, well, all cities are strong. And when the Las Vegas shooting occurred, people said, I stand with Vegas. Nobody said, well, what about all the other people that get shot in other cities? Have you ever seen someone counter a breast cancer post with, well, what about colon cancer? But for some reason, if someone says Black Lives Matter, it then turns into an all-inclusive All Lives Matter. This is not an either-or proclamation. When there is a crisis, we have always rallied around that particular group. It doesn't discredit or diminish any other group. It just brings awareness and support to the group that needs our attention now. And that's why people say Black Lives Matter. Thanks. Madam Chair?
Thank you. I don't know if I can follow that. I had Mr. Trinsey as a teacher at Manatee High School. So.
He's out.
Good for him. Yeah, I hope he enjoys his retirement. Other than that, though, I thanks everyone for a productive meeting and I feel like we got a lot done and I'm happy everybody was here. And look at everybody's just wrapping up their stuff while I'm talking. That's okay. It's eight, no, no, you know, we have, I have like five words it out. It is 8:52 and if there's no objections, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you guys very much. much.